Well, good evening, everyone. We will go ahead and get started with our planning commission meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And can I get Commissioner Davis to lead us through that?
Yeah, well, the audience please rise. Audience, please repeat, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. First two items on the agenda is the minutes from our previous planning commission meetings on October 2nd and November 6th. I think that was sent in an email from Dave this week. If you've had a chance to look at that, if you've got any questions, if not, we'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes from October 2nd and November 6th.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, third item is a preliminary plat, CDL Commercial subdivision. Dave, were you gonna walk us through that?
Obviously, there's not a lot to this proposal. The applicant would like to subdivide an existing parcel into the four different lots that we see there identified as parcels A, B, C, and D. Such properties at the corner of 2700 North and Main Street that are on the southeast corner. There is a manufacturing business right now in one building on the site. The site definitely has potential to accommodate additional land uses. And staff has really no concerns at all with what they'd like to do here. I think this is a little bit forward-looking on the part of the applicant with the idea that just to the east of this property, we hope that in 2023 or 2024 there will be a new I-15 interchange there, certainly increasing whatever demand might exist now for any other uses of this site. So that being said, staff would recommend that the proposed subdivision plat, preliminary plat, be approved, simply subject to the applicant addressing the comments that were raised in the DRC meeting today or any red lines that they get from city staff in the next couple of weeks.
Is there any concerns that you want to mention from the review committee?
Honestly, nothing that's worth mentioning.
Okay. There was another, on another slide, there was a little box kind of in the yellow.
Might have just been the vicinity map that we have.
Yeah. Is that just some examples of what could happen?
That's funny, I didn't notice that. I know that, yeah, the applicant had done some conceptual work.
Okay.
Kind of a master plan to show what could happen there.
Okay.
And that's what that different line word represents.
And as far as if this was approved, if any one of those parcels was to be developed and a building wanted to be erected, it would go through the normal process of...
Yep, they'd have to get a site plan approved.
See a lot of parking over here.
Right away.
Okay. Any questions from the commissioners?
So what about, when I was over there looking at this piece on, more on parcel D, there's a lot of parking in that. Does that take away from the parking for the building itself for what's required for that?
Yeah, what you see here on this image, this is what's existing. So right now, parcel D is entirely vacant.
Okay, so that's a vacant field off to this.
Yeah. In between this and, I want to say Longview.
Okay, 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 yeah, okay.
So, Dave, when you look at different parcels and different plans that come before the city, are the parking requirements as far as the amount of stalls, are they based on the parcel or are they based on the entire development area?
It's based on use and sometimes it's both. So if we have, Canyon Creek's a good example, and this is why we want to make sure that we get some things on record relative to Lowe's and outdoor storage here in a minute. Sometimes it's done on the cumulative total square footage that a development might have and what we think the tenant mix is going to be, the types of units, or sorry, the types of businesses that are going to occupy different spaces in a project. That's really how we've approached Canyon Creek to identify how much parking is required. I wouldn't expect that with this project, the uses are going to vary that much. And in fact, with industrial uses, it's really based more on the number of employees than anything else, which is not a perfect way to regulate how much parking gets required. We're basically taking a company's word for how many employees they'll have at their highest shift and therefore making sure that there's a parking space for each of those persons on site. So there are a few different ways that it gets approached when we review a site plan for a parcel like that.
And for this location as well, it's on Main Street. I assume you could park right on Main Street if you needed to, right?
Today, you could, yeah. There's a chance that in the future, that'll be limited, but today, you could.
Do you have any questions?
Okay, thank you. Any discussion, commissioners?
I don't have any concerns over it.
Okay. So this is, this is not a recommendation, this is a request for approval from us. Is that correct, Dave?
Yes.
Okay. So if there's not any further discussion, is there someone that would like to make a motion on this?
I would make a motion that the CDL Commercial subdivision preliminary plat be approved on the findings and conditions that are set forth in this document.
Okay.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the fourth item is a conditional use permit. This is going to be a public hearing at some point, Lowe's Outdoor Storage.
Thank you. This is really simple, I don't want to make it more complicated than it is. Lowe's would like to do, and before I started to describe this, man, this has been a super exciting week for Spanish Fork, and I mean this.
Yeah.
Having Lowe's open finally in different ways, it's been in the works for a lot of years for this to happen, to get to this point. The folks at Lowe's have been great to work with over the years, the brokers that helped make this site work, the people with Woodbury, the amount of effort that went into making this site buildable relative to some things that had to be done, to prep the site, relocate some really, really big power poles and different things like that. Certainly a team effort, a lot of people played a role in it, most importantly, Lowe's, and being a part of the community with their commitment to this particular store. Couldn't be more excited to have them here in Spanish Fork. Really, it's a great, you know, right now, you could say maybe a third anchor that we have with Costco and Walmart. And I assume we've all already spent a few hundred dollars there. I'm sure a lot more to come. And along with that, incidentally, Chili's is going to open here, if not this weekend, early next week. Mobeta's on Main Street, so a lot going on, exciting times, and a lot of these things have been in the works for a long time, so it's great to see them finally happen. But that being said, talking about parking and some concerns we have sometimes relative to parking, outdoor storage, particularly when it's in a fairly similar, I'm sorry, a fairly permanent kind of a situation like what this will be. We approve conditional uses largely just to be specific about what's allowed and where things are allowed. So just to take a quick minute, this part of the site here that's identified with the yellow, that with this approval would allow for 10 parking spaces to be occupied with the highway trailers. I call them flatbed trailers and that type of a thing. If you've seen other Lowe's stores or any of their competitors around, you know that it's fairly customary for some of that to be displayed in a parking lot. And that's precisely what's proposed at that particular part of the site here. The other two things that they'd like to store outside, you've seen the sheds.
And what's, what's the trailers for, for storage of the products?
You know, I would, and trailers, yeah, so it is that product
Okay.
that they simply park there and market from that parking site.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
When I heard highway trailers to start with, I was picturing something very different as well. But it's not, for example, how they would, would store product, inventory and things like that as in waiting to move it into the store or something, anything like that. It's literally the...
Trailer that would be for sale?
Precisely.
Or rent?
I think it's for sale. I think they're for sale. Somebody from Lowe's is here tonight, they can certainly give you a better picture of that than me though.
And of that highlighted areas, is 10 of those stalls?
10.
You have more highlighted than that there?
10 is the number that we were given, yeah.
Will they, will they be cross-hatched off? How will they...
I don't, typically, they aren't, from what I've observed. So I wouldn't anticipate that. Over here, this would be six to eight, so we would say eight, up to eight parking stalls taken with the sheds that they market. And then lastly, over here, six parking stalls, this would be product or pallets of product potentially as they're waiting to inventory that someplace else on the site. So those are the three areas that the conditional use would apply to. Anything on the back of, back of the property here, we generally aren't concerned at all about. So that's the proposal, is to approve a conditional use so that that part of the site could be used for outdoor storage perpetually, and it is a public hearing.
Dave, would, would there be some specifics? You mentioned how many stalls in each of those places. Would this be written up in such a way that it could be enforced that way? You know?
Precisely, yeah, so...
Because that, you know, to Commissioner Mitchell's standpoint, it, it looks like a lot more stalls than that just from the highlight area. But if the detail was in the conditional use, that would make it much more clear.
Right, and that's why we've been explicit in the staff report, and why I've just referenced the number.
Okay.
And really, I think as much as anything, getting this on record the way that we are right now has value over time. Where this is a unified commercial development with different tenants. Occasionally, tenants do have concerns about how their neighbors are using property like parking areas and things like that. So as much, even for Lowe's protection, if somebody complains about having parking spaces occupied with merchandise and therefore not being available, you know, in the typical fashion like you'd have with park, I'm sorry, with cross-parking easements and the different things that allow customers for one business to park on another site, you know, while they're patronizing a different business. This gives Lowe's some maturity that legally they can do that. You know, other people might have concerns with it or not. At the same time, if Lowe's ends up exceeding the numbers that we've talked about tonight, then there's some recourse that the city could take to dial that back.
Thank you, Dave. Is there someone from Lowe's tonight? No?
Busy at the store.
What's that?
Busy at the store.
Yeah, okay.
I was there the other day. Was that you with?
Should we put that on record? Does the commissioners have any concern with this conditional use?
I don't.
Okay. And this is, let's see, we got to have a public hearing on it. So we don't have any more questions, I'll just go ahead and go into a public hearing at this time. Anyone from the audience who'd like to comment? If we can get you to state your name and...
My name's David Sheas with Willowbrook.
Okay.
And Dave, do you have your...
Red Lion.
Yeah, it was working.
First of all, I want to tell Dave how disappointed I am that you didn't mention us in the contribution to Lowe's.
Oh, I forgot about that!
Heck, yeah!
Except for the team effort!
Without us selling the property, this would have never happened. We were stronger than this whole problem. So we have, we have all this property here.
Okay.
And we did deal with Woodbury and Lowe's and arm wrestling. I think he beat us, you know, but we did get some concessions out of the city. In order to sell that little best corner here, actually, it was all, it was all this here, wasn't it, Dave?
It was.
We came straight down like this. So we sold that whole triangle of Willowbrook, and so we have some here, 10 acres there that we're going to build office buildings on.
Okay.
Apparently, you want us to build office buildings because there's a big need, right?
Sooner or better.
Sooner or better, yeah, we're going to submit this next week.
Perfect.
Okay, so getting that cleared up and getting the credits for what could cost us a lot of money. We were on the losing side of that. One of the things that we did talk about, and I think you'll remember this, is that we want to make sure that, since this is our view corridor in any office buildings that we have, that even though you said a minute ago you were concerned about what's on the backside of Lowe's, we are. Because our, any product that we put on here, office buildings, et cetera, will be looking kind of the back here. So if you're going to store something here and it's trailers, like says Lowe's and all that stuff and they're there permanently, that's not something that we think would be good-looking for this office building to look at, nor would it be consistent with, I think, what would we verbally but not signed agree to, that this would maintain a good-looking area for our product. And since we made a serious contribution to have this Lowe's here, we're not opposed to having some sort of stores here, but we don't want it to be the trailers or something that's, they're trying to hide from the public so that then it becomes, you know, hiding from here, so it's hidden behind a building, so we have to look at it. So my recommendation would be that if you're going to store trailers or something ugly, put it somewhere else and leave us with the trees and the, something that's a little bit incongruent with what we kind of all agreed to as we walked into this building, right?
Right.
Do we know, Dave, is that, is that their garden center, their outdoor garden center on that side? So that would make sense, that that's where they would put their trees and shrubs and things that people seasonally would come by.
I think that's very likely.
Okay.
Yeah, we just, I just wanted, hopefully, if it gets written into it, as you were talking about something specific, that the specific would have some sort of language that would keep it from being the stockpile of the...
Pallets.
Pallets and the, things like that, that wouldn't make it good for anybody wanting, you know, doctors, lawyers, insurance companies, because what we're intending to do is build a medical office back up here that would support the hospital and all this sort of stuff. And if you, you know, somebody's sitting in a dentist's chair looking out the window, they're not going to be real happy looking down at crates and stuff like that. Green trees and storage and stuff like that, yeah. But trailers and stuff, I don't think that would look good.
Just tell the dentist to give him a little extra laughing gas.
So is there a way to designate what they put in certain locations in the parking area?
That's really what we're trying to do now, is to be as specific as we can be. And I'm really honestly just kind of parroting back what I was told that they would like to do. Relative to the part of the site that Mr. Sheas is most concerned about, I was told that it would be pallets of product. I'm picturing, for example, I think we can see some of what they have there.
Landscaping, Todd.
I think it makes perfect sense, though, to add some language, maybe to limit that to a certain height, to where it's just one pallet, they're not stacked on top of one another or something like that. Or if you feel more comfortable about saying this part of the site doesn't work for that, you want them relocated maybe closer to the building instead of closer to the street.
If you're thinking of garden center like Lowe's, there are certain things that naturally have to be close to their center, right? Like what you can see there.
Right.
Their fence posts and things like that, that would be normal. But stacking trash and, you know, their stuff, their old pallets or trailers or things, I don't think are congruent or necessarily to run a good operation, have to be like garden center, that could be somewhere else. Not opposed to having, you know, making Lowe's operations smooth by putting things that belong next to each other, right next to each other. I'm not saying that, but we're just saying, don't dogpile there with garbage.
And when I've said pallets, I'm sorry, I don't think it's their intent at all, and I think we should be clear, that we're not talking about stacking empty pallets on top of one another, but rather it is a pallet of product. That's what they plan on having there and storing there. And I think we can be very clear relative to that. I don't believe they have any intention of using that, you know, which is, that's a pretty good view shed onto the property and things like that, either to store things that are unsightly or that aren't going to be cared for, maintained, turned over pretty regularly and that sort of a thing. But we definitely can, can be specific on that, I appreciate that. I, in saying pallets, that's not, I didn't mean stacking old, broken-up pallets there or anything like that.
Is there a fence on that backside now?
No, it's just this hotel and it goes into the landscape in which it probably will be. But these buildings will probably give minimum of three stories.
Yeah.
So fence isn't going to affect, you know, anything above it first of all.
What they would have on the back of house side would be the, would be the corrugated...
There's going to be stuff back here.
The bales, that's the word I was looking for.
Corrugated bales.
The bales, corrugated material boxes.
I would almost guess exactly what you're seeing right there is what you're going to be looking at. Exactly. Where's the garden area, where's the garden area? That's what you're going to be looking at.
Maybe a bigger area of what some of the other plats look like around Lowe's now. You may have the same concern on the opposite corner, you know, is there potential for buildings there? That has the same concern. Is there a view we could look at there?
Just an aerial view of the site. So you're talking about over here?
Yes.
So...
Maybe, can you go bigger than that or no?
It's, oh, it's more parking.
I'll side-plan what it looks like today.
Is there any design for any roads or anything in there to break up some of these plats, like between the medical, medical office buildings that he's proposing in Lowe's?
This takes a little deciphering to make sense of, but you can see that there are lots that have been created for different pads out in front of Lowe's. We haven't yet seen any specific plans for how those would develop. Honestly, I think they will develop very similarly to what we've seen in front of Walmart. And with the plat and its approval, specific drive aisles have been identified and different things like that. And in essence, I think between Marketplace Drive and Spanish Fork Parkway up to the north, there's going to be a fairly continuous path that'll run in front of Lowe's and in front of whatever business ends up locating to the north of Lowe's, up the Spanish Fork Parkway.
Okay.
But no, we really don't have anything more specific than that right now.
Yeah.
One thing that I, I guess, and again, I was, I was alarmed at the idea of what I was picturing highway trailers to be and having those stored over here, I was picturing that being this right here, if you will, you know, a tractor trailer type of thing that maybe ends up getting parked out there for a couple of days when they show up early or something like that. But that's not, that's not what's proposed.
Just to get that picture clear.
Is that a drone?
We have a drone.
This is the property.
Yeah, so this is a little of our site that Dave was talking about.
We're right on, yeah.
Just go down. There you go.
So our property went like this. In order to put Lowe's in there, we sold in that corner right there in order to be able to screech it off of the landfill as much as they could to make it affordable for them with the, and this is where the office buildings will be. Our driveway into the office buildings will come, actually, there's a approach right here, this is the old street, will come right into here, and this is where the bulk of the office buildings will be. So that is not desirable, having, you know...
And that actually...
And this, stuff like this is not desirable.
And that's just construction, so, right? So I don't think that we would anticipate that that kind of thing...
But stuff like this is fine, that's what you were saying, is that, that's probably what you see is what you get, is that there, that's normal, because that's congruent with the use of that for some of it, right?
But you'll also have tractor trailers like that come in and be unloaded and stuff like that?
No, we do that, we do that when we, we knew that this was a drive aisle.
And you, and you might have a trailer dropped off right there for a day or something and then take off because... So, you know, that's...
But it won't be there permanently, like a permanent storage trailer.
Yeah.
You know, like a corrugated conics box, you know, so...
But you don't have some sort of concerns over in this area where these white with pallets of just like...
But still, you know, in our view corridor.
No, but I'm saying if it's product like this over here, if it's just a pallet of ties or a pallet of...
As long as, you know, as long as it's congruent with the use of like their...
A garden center.
We were always, yeah, we were always thought that if you've got a garden center here, obviously, this has to support the garden center. But one of the things that if you recall, we had a concern is that it's not used for permanent storage of stuff that would normally be behind a building right in through here. But if it's related to the use of that, then I don't think we can, we have a right to complain.
And I think that, that's what I understand that they would like to do.
I don't know why they would, why would you put stuff that you hide behind your building on your curb? You know, that doesn't make sense. It seems like it'd be stuff they'd be wanting selling in the garden center.
Yeah.
But we can add that language in there.
Sure we could, or you could, you can say no to this part of the site and say you've got to store it someplace closer to the building.
They have pallets of product right there, close to the, or close to the garden center in the back of it right there now, I mean, in this picture. So I don't know how much they'll really require.
So some of these stalls that you identified, maybe the six or eight, in this particular area would probably be where them blue dumpsters would be, is that correct?
What they've identified on the plan is this right here.
Okay, okay.
I, I appreciate the concern, particularly if, if things are stacked up high, but a pallet that's maybe four feet tall or something like that, you can see that there's a little bit of grade change, there's a little bit of berming and things like that. I think it becomes really diminutive, kind of like what we saw from the, the other site that...
Yeah, but you get to, they get those trees a little more mature too, like that other view you was looking at.
Why can't we put like single pallet in a timeframe, so it's only seasonal?
Right.
You know, for more than four months or something like that.
You could do that, they, I think they'd like to keep stuff out there, at least have the ability to keep it out there year-round, but you, you set the conditions.
Yeah, it's too bad they wasn't here, maybe you had some other photos of their other stores that would help us better understand.
And this, London Home Depot does a really good job with those trees there. I mean, I go, that's where I normally go, but on the other side of those trees, they have touch sheds. And you don't see them until you drive around these trees in the parking lot.
Of course, the orange Lowe's keep their outside.
Yes, driving there right now, I check that. So I was just saying, maybe, if you, if you did, if you did get my trees, that mitigates the problem.
Well, and then my question is, is that would there be a shared responsibility on planting those trees? I mean, obviously, it doesn't mean too much to them, but it'll mean everything to you. So if you are a willing participant with Lowe's, put in some kind of, you know, natural barrier like trees and stuff, it would be to your advantage as much as to Lowe's. And so, you know, a little bit of a carrot rather than a stick might go a long ways with that. It's too bad that they're not here to talk about that.
That's right next to the main road, right? That's not Murray Hilli, that's a, that's a bad example.
But that's a heck of a lot more than what we're gonna see.
For what they've asked for.
Yes.
True, that's true.
That's a lot of stuff right there.
University Parkway.
Man, I don't know what all that is. It's a lot of stuff.
Fertilizer.
Wood chips, wood chips, a bunch of jump jack, that much right there.
Wow, that's, that's a lot.
Yeah, there's the trailers that you're talking about.
Well, that's one of the problems they have there is look how small their parking is in front of the store.
But they're also in University Parkway where there's just traffic.
But I mean, they, they need to store some stuff somewhere and it wasn't in the front.
Yeah, that's all they have.
So they had to do something. Well, they're right there on the sidewalk, dude.
That's the nursery.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think that's what we're gonna see in Spanishport.
Well, if we limit this stall count, that gives us a lot of protection too, from creating something like this.
Yeah, stall count, size, different things like that, duration of time, that's what we could...
Yeah, maybe some height too. Some of them stacks out front was twelve feet tall, looked like it.
I, the amount that you're gonna see there's gonna be based on their demand.
Absolutely.
That store's getting as much and this store's gonna be a similar volume of traffic, you may see as much.
Yeah, if there's no...
That's why I think there needs to be a restriction or definition of the camp.
So what's the wording, what are we looking at? How detailed do we need to be?
It's only how detailed you wanna be.
Probably oughta go out of public hearing.
Thank you for reminding me, it was in public hearing. Uh, is there anyone that, anyone else that wanted to comment from the public? Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing portion and, uh, sounds like we've got some discussion commissioners, maybe some language that we might, uh, put in there to give us some protection later on.
So you guys have met with Lowe's, right, DRC?
Uh, I only spoke with the manager of the front office.
Did you guys get specific details as to stall counts, things like that, that they were final?
What I described to you is as best as I could verbatim what I was told in terms of what and where and how many spaces they would occupy.
Tens for trailers, eight for the sheds, then just that area for storage.
And up to six for the pallets is what I was told on the south side.
And pallets, single level?
We didn't get into that detail, I think, and I appreciate Mr. Sheat's concern again, I think limiting maybe the height or how many pallets could be stacked on top of one another, mentioning, for example, as well, that it's pallets of product, it's not anything else, it's not any kind of debris or that type of a thing.
Empty pallets, empty pallets of broken, yeah. I think heights would be probably better than multiples of stacks, maybe ten feet.
Ten feet, two inches.
Ten feet, two inches, going once?
Yeah, that sounds good, sounds like Todd's got it.
Uh, one, one thing we could do is, is, I mean, say some specifics like this, but this is gonna go to the city council, correct?
No.
No, okay, okay. Well, uh, yes.
I don't know that height would be a deterrent for us as much as it's like this product here is not bad. As long as it's not a debris type product, debris type pallet, anybody looking at a garden center would expect that, even if it's ten or twelve feet tall. I don't know that they'd go that high because of safety.
Yeah.
But I think the key issue, just as long as it's not a debris type storage and if it's a product type storage...
Debris, meaning like garbage?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're talking about sellable product.
If it's a product type storage, I think that would, you know, I don't think, to me, if ours was and I had something that I had ten of, I'd roll my eyes and go, yeah.
Yeah.
But if they distinguish between a product used versus a product dumped.
Yeah.
That would be pretty easy to police and be, nobody would misunderstand that type of thing.
Thank you.
So if you ever been to a Lowe's and seen anything that would harm your view or anything?
Tractor trailers, uh, the Home Depot up in Orme, or Linden, yeah, when you go around the north side, they stack, um, they have racks on the outside where they stack pipe, uh, down those pipe, PVC pipe.
Right, but let's go back to, Michael, go back to the area where it has yellow parts so we can see what we, what we're dealing with again.
Okay, here's the area, this area, this is the north side of that Home Depot.
Yeah, those are, those are bundles of, uh...
Well, that's lumber, that's all lumber, but this is the garden area, so I would be assuming that you're gonna have plants and you're gonna have the bark and you're gonna have the fertilizer and stuff like that, exactly what you've seen stacked up and stuff like that. So there won't be any big trailers or anything parked there, there'll be exactly what's coming out for the garden area. Anywhere that I've ever been with Lowe's or Home Depot in the garden area, that's what you, that's what you're gonna see. I, I've never seen big tractors and tra, you know, or trailers and tractors that, in that area. I've seen them in, like, like you said, in the back where they unload and stuff like that, but this is not where they, they'll unload stuff here, I'm sure, but the main load will be over there where the big doors are, where they bring in their supplies and stuff like that. And you might see a tractor, trailer, or a trailer laid out just like you've seen there for a day, but I don't think you'll be there very long, because they'll, you know, they're moving too much. I, I think, I think what you're gonna see is exactly what you've seen in that one photo with the bark and the fertilizer and stuff like that. I just, I have a hard time saying that we put limitations on what goes where, because I think they've got it laid out exactly what they're gonna do, you know, in, in their mind, and that's why they came to us with a conditional use permit.
Yeah.
As long as you can, uh, dump for store, you know, debris type restriction on it.
I just, yeah, I, and, and all of these areas that's marked with yellow, I don't see that happening.
Well, there's, very similar, they got spare racks.
I'd call that debris.
You're getting into a little bit of trash there, aren't you?
Seeing there's, you're gonna have, there's pallets stacked up right there and, but those are gonna get picked up and taken away and, and used again. I don't, I don't know how long they take them or keep them there.
Just hold them to the product.
But that's...
Product that they're gonna sell.
That's the backside of the building toward the truck, storage bays are at, or the truck bays are at.
I, like, I'm with John, I wish Lowe's had a representative here so we could talk to them, but we're just estimating really what's, what they're gonna put there, but, and how high they're gonna stack them or what product's gonna go, but gee, I can't say limited in what they, you know, what they sell, that's, that's hard for our judgment to do.
Well, I think if we can limit to product that they're going to sell, that's what they're asking for, that's what they've asked, we don't have a concern with that, so we just limit it to...
Sellable product.
Sellable product. And six stalls and they've got what they wanted and the concern is met. So how would it sound to put this kind of, uh, language in it, uh, that it be approved, uh, uh, with the conditions that are set forth? Now, I wanna kinda get your...
You wanna talk about it, okay, go ahead.
That we say, uh, including the type of storage that is allowed on that site and avoiding trash or debris in that area. Would that cover your concerns? And then we ask, you know, one of the things here is that, uh, that one of our recommendations is with the condition that the applicant meet any conditions imposed by the DRC. And those would include the type of storage and trash or debris. I don't know if it's so important that we go with height, 'cause like you said, it's gonna be, it's gonna be limited by what you can stack, and we didn't see any real height issues with the stacking, so would that, something like that?
Yeah, I think so.
Would that satisfy our concerns?
Um, you know, the other concern I have is on that corner of just the permanent storage of trailer, you know, uh, Lowe's, you know, their trailer, if it's permanent storage in this particular corner, because it is a marketplace right over there too, you know?
Yeah, I think, uh, I don't know whether Lowe's put anything in this that that was part of what they were asking for was, was the Lowe's trailers.
Parking spaces, anybody with a...
No.
So six.
The trailer's on the north side, right?
Yeah, the trailers are on the north side.
Well, they're only asking for a small handful of spaces to be converted, they can't put a trailer anywhere.
Right, right, so I, you know, that wouldn't be, I don't think that would be a concern there.
What you've got is good, Jill.
Then I'm gonna make a recommendation that, uh, we approve the Lowe's outdoor storage conditional use, uh, along with the condition that the applicant meet any city conditions or any conditions imposed by the develop, uh, the de, the Development Review Committee, including the type of storage, that we avoid the, the storage of trash or debris in these parking spaces as they have been proposed.
Okay, we got a motion from Commissioner Menon Hall? Have a second?
I can't.
I'll second that.
Can a second?
So we just talking this one little spot here, we talking all four of the yellow?
All the designated locations. So they can't store empty pallets, trash, trash bins?
On these four conditional use areas, huh?
Which I don't think they were planning on doing that anyways.
They specified what they were going to store, so I don't see that that's an issue.
Any other concerns, Richard? You look like you're thinking over there.
Yeah, I have a lot of concerns. Well, I just think that if you put conditions, if you put pallets and things like that, you know, they're gonna put pallets in that there for a while, I think that's gonna happen. Um, I don't think they'll stay there very long, but if you put a condition there, then they can't put a pallet there at all.
I think that the time that this pallet is left there would determine whether it's trash or whether it's just being stored there. Till it's picked up, these kind of stores bring in huge amount of product, and if they don't get rid of their pallets, they're gonna be swimming in pallets. So, you know, most of the time they have some there and they, and whoever comes in and picks them up, picks up the tal, pallets and takes them off as well.
So debris and trash, what are we sit, considering? And what is that? What's trash and debris then to you?
I would say anything that's left there without a purpose, including pallets if they can't store a pallet, if a pallet sits there.
Is there, for how long, or, I mean, is there, I mean, you, I definitely, if you look at that right there, that picture, that's trash.
That's trash.
So how long does that stay there? How long does that stay there? There's trash right there, how long does that stay there?
And my question with that, if you're a business owner next door to that and you see that, how difficult would it be to call a store manager and say, hey, I've driven by your place a couple of times the last few weeks and this has been there, could you guys take care of that for me? More than likely they will, right? I would think so, so, so to, to have to get into detail enough that you're making conditions on these things, I don't know.
I just have a hard time doing that. Like I said, I agree with what you just said. If you have a problem, then you call them and just say, can you get rid of that for us? And they would do it.
But we try and make a condition to make other property owners next door feel comfortable with what's going on.
Well, I agree with what John's saying, but there's, there's gotta be a limit here somewhere on how far we push this with Lowe's on how they're gonna run their business and how, where they're gonna put their stuff and everything else, because they, they have a way that they do stuff, and if we limit their way of doing things that, you know, by putting different conditions on it, then they're gonna come back to us and they're gonna say, hey, we've gotta have something different here to make this work or, 'cause you, 'cause we got, you got people down here policing us and telling us that, so I just wanna make this right here before we make something that's...
So we've got a motion, we've got a second, we haven't voted yet, what do we do if we need to make changes at this point?
Um, before I answer that, I think Richard's right in the sense that they described what they requested, or Dave described what they requested, they're not present here tonight, and so you're more than welcome to move forward with the motion that's made and has been seconded, and then in the future, if it doesn't work for their function or their store, uh, they can always come back and request to amend the conditional use permit and be more specific and be present to address any questions or concerns.
Okay.
But as was mentioned, it's exactly what was described, uh, that's been included in the motion with the clarifications that would offer some protections to the joint property owner.
Yeah.
And as far as amending the motion, Richard, or John, excuse me, Commissioner Menon Hall can always withdraw his motion or he can accept amendments to his motion.
Richard, you want to make any amendments to the motion? You want to vote on it?
Well, I'm gonna vote nay, just for that reason, and I wanna protect you as much as I can, but I, I just don't see, I just, I wish Lowe's was here to explain exactly how their motions and how they do things properly, but I think the trash and everything will be taken care of within days of every time they stack stuff, I just don't think that you start putting motions on that, because then they'll be policed and everything else, and they can't put their pallets and stuff like, I mean, you can go forth, so I, you know, I'm just not for that, I just...
Richard, I can, I can see your concern with...
I mean, I wanna help, I wanna help the businesses that are looking down on this and everything else, and I just don't see Lowe's in this area, I would have more concerns than some of the other areas.
The thing this does give us though is a, uh, a standard, okay? So your point of having some pallets there for two or three hours till somebody picks them up, that's gonna happen, and it's not gonna have to be policed, it's just gonna be taken care of, but at least the motion that's been presented gives us some standards. So now it's out of control for two weeks, we can come back and say, hey, that's not a sellable item, that's a bunch of pallets, it's not the spirit of what we're doing.
Somebody that sees it and doesn't like it can approach the city and the city can approach Lowe's and then say it is in the conditions that you guys keep this clean.
And that's fine, and so what I would do is let's vote.
Okay.
And we'll go with the vote and a unanimous vote takes, takes care of it.
I think one other thing you said, and that is, is that Lowe's has built a beautiful property and I'm glad they're here, and I want them to succeed and I want them to do business in a way that will make them a lot of money and pay us a lot of taxes. And I don't wanna impose any kind of condition that would cause them any kind of grief other than to be a good neighbor. They had every opportunity to put some storage areas on this property, fenced, you know, and have a place where they could do that kind of stuff, they didn't do it. Now, they've been open for a week, ten days, and now they're saying, well, we need some more room. Well, you know, they got their parking spaces, now they wanna take some of the parking spaces away. Uh, I, I pulled into here and, you know, I think they've got enough parking, I don't think this is gonna hurt them. But I think this is just part of being a good neighbor, and I don't consider trash to be a pile of pallets that's gonna be picked up this week. And I don't think that that's what's, what's going to be the issue. I think the issue would be a continual eyesore. If you wanna see a continual eyesore, go on the north side of Walmart and see what they've got stacked on the, on the, uh, big, uh, shelves that they've got there now, you know? They got a lot of stuff there that's not very good looking, but there's nobody there complaining, although you can see it from where you go. So anyway, what I'm just saying is, is that I, the, the reason that I think this is a decent proposal is, is that it gives them, uh, a little bit of a, of a nudge to keep things looking good. This isn't a business that's been here a long time, they just barely got into business. It's not like your business where you've done a lot of things in back of your business and most of them have been to be, to be more efficient and to make, uh, and make money in your business.
Yeah.
And I don't think that this is a, I don't this, I don't think this is egregious, I don't think that this is out of line for what I think that this business can handle. That's my opinion.
Okay, well, I appreciate Brandon, your comments, uh, you know, and share that with, with Lowe's that because they wasn't represented with a lot of detail, we're trying to protect them and the neighbors and, and you could always come back for amended. So we've got a motion, we've got a second. So, we've got a motion, we've got a second. Go ahead and do a roll call vote, starting with Commissioner Mitchell.
Hi.
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 Nay. Okay, thank you. Kim, you got enough clarification on that motion?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, next item. River Run Town Home Zone Change, is that right, Brandon?
Yes, this next item, thank you Chair, is a rezone and a preliminary plat request that are running concurrently. Generally, that's been the practice of the city. Mike's gonna, Michael Clark, our driver at the steering wheel tonight, is going to zoom there in just a second. And we do have the applicant Sam Drown here, as well as the applicant's engineer Scott Peterson in the back. The area that we're looking for the project is the Mckell property. Thinking that's orangish, I can't really tell with the screen, but it's right here. So it's currently, the general plan is high-density residential, so what the applicant's been doing is operating under that designation. What he's looking specifically for tonight is preliminary plan approval for a master plan development, as well as a zone change to an R3 zone. Now, the R3 zone uses the densities are permitted under this general plan designation that's already in place. And so what I'd like to do is I'll just kinda go over the project in general. We then have Michael Clark, our Assistant City Engineer, who's gonna maybe share a little bit of detail as far as some challenges in this area as it relates to utilities and access. We then have the applicant who would like to take a moment just to share any details. And then he'd also like an opportunity at the end, if there's any questions or concerns that he can answer, he'd love to, love to do that.
Okay.
So as I mentioned, it's a master plan development. If we go ahead and jump to the PowerPoint, or excuse me, the Google Slides presentation now, Mike. So this is rotated, north is the left of the screen. I guess I shouldn't motion with my hands, but north is this end. Here's South Lane. To orient yourself, this is the Annie's Acres project to the east, and then the River Bottoms are southeast from here. As you can see, currently the access is off of South Lane that connects to Main Street here. And you can see a couple of different connections in the future, one that will feed into Annie's Acres, and then two that will go east and west with the intent that will make connections to Main Street. This is a key piece here on the plat, it's just shown as parcel A. And in the motion, there is an indication that that parcel would be addressed in a development agreement with the city. And the city has been in talks with the applicant as far as purchasing that, so that they can expand the operations with the fairgrounds. This kinda shows the general layout of the project. We've got a townhome product. It is a master plan development, so there are amenities that are being provided. The one that you see highlighted here is the clubhouse with a pool behind it. Let's go ahead and jump to the next slide. Now, as far as property, it's just over twenty-six acres. If you take away just under six acres that this is, this lot A area here, we're, we're looking after, after that's excluded, about nine, just under, nine and three quarters, just under ten units per acre. The R3 does allow an applicant to potentially go up to twelve units an acre. Usually, site configuration or open space requirements or parking requirements may lower that. And so the, the product that we've got here for us tonight is just under ten units an acre. All of the units do come with a two-car garage, and then there's also additional parking provided on, on site. And so you can see a lot of the parking associated with the park and the clubhouse, parking associated with, with this park, with this park. And then at the end of each of the private drive, shared accessways, you see some additional parking. Let's go ahead and jump to the next slide. So as a master planned development, the Planning Commission and City Council do have the opportunity to look and scrutinize the product as it relates to amenities, as it relates to signage, you can see the signage here up in the corner, as it relates to elevations and architectural styles. So what you're seeing here is the clubhouse, and across the way you have the pavilion. This is the landscape exhibit that shows how those relate to each other, as well as the main road. The monument sign is proposed up along, I believe it's where it comes off of Arrowhead.
There'll be monuments at each entrance, so we're.
Yeah, that's, I'm sorry, the large monument sign, I believe, is on the Arrowhead. Or Volunteer, Volunteer, sorry. If we jump back one, Mike, sorry. So the large monument sign will be here, and then the smaller monument signs will be on the ends. If we can go ahead and jump two slides, Mike. So this is showing some more of the amenities down near South Lane. On one side, you're gonna have the dog park. On the opposite side, as you come into the development, you'll have a playground area. Here's some examples of some of the playground equipment that we have. Let's go ahead and jump to the next slide. This is highlighting the product, and I'll probably let the applicant speak more to it, so we can come back to this. Some of the things that the city code calls out for is certain roof pitch, certain types of materials, variations to give it some style and to kinda avoid bland repetition, some blank walls and whatnot. This is showing the site. This is the city vehicle on South Lane right here. This is a view from South Lane looking into the property. If you've had a chance to drive through the area, it's kind of at the crossroads. You've got Annie's Acres going in, so there's obviously some development activity. And clearly, the city has been enjoying their drone. I don't know if it was purchased a year ago or, but these are some great shots. So that's the subject property here. The lot A that the city's looking at buying is up here by the fairgrounds. This is the Annie's Acres site here. The river is just off the screen, Main Street is just off the screen here.
Can you show where the proposed roads would connect roughly?
I believe right down the middle.
There?
Oh, and then, so you'd have an, we'll let Mike jump to that. I think it's the next one of the slides. Yep. And so I'll stay close. We'll turn the time over to Michael Clark, just to address some of the concerns that the applicant's been working through with the city as it relates to engineering.
I can talk from here, right? Is that okay? I borrow the laser. All right, so this is a concept we have from a little while ago. This print is a, I don't know if I can zoom in. Maybe not. There was a newer amended preliminary plat that was done, so that's like pasted on top of our original drawing we did. So this is existing South Lane to here. That is where the utilities and everything's been brought down for Annie's Acres. As we looked at it, the original master plan had this road coming all the way through, same width, same everything from Volunteer and coming down. We are also updating our transportation master plan. As part of that, we had them run a proposed alternative to have Arrowhead Trail instead run through and have this be more of a local road since it goes through commercial. We thought, why take up a hundred-plus feet of right-of-way through a future commercial site when maybe it could be done through maybe a different alignment? So it did model better to run it this way, instead of running it through this way. So our conceptual, high-level look at this is while we, this is obviously a little more expensive, because you go, it's over a river. But it does model a lot better, carries a lot, higher traffic capacities to get them out to the Benjamin exit, gets them to a signal here. The constraint we have right now, so I'm gonna get into that with the utilities and everything, okay? So, we did a traffic study with the Annie's Acres, because obviously, South Lane is not a high-capacity road, neither is River Bottoms Road. Both of them have issues with turns, with site distances. And we asked the traffic engineer, how many units, how many more additional cars can this lane, this area handle before we start to struggle accidents, delays, people getting impatient, they start making us wise decisions? He said, give us your feedback. So their feedback was ninety-two units. At ninety-two units, there needs to be another decent second way to get into this, this area.
Right now, you're just talking about South Lane connecting to Main Street?
Yeah. So that would be the main way these people would access and come in and have the property.
Ninety-two units on top of Annie's Acres?
No, ninety-two total, with Annie's Acres, this property, anything that uses along South Lane.
In our prior meeting, I don't know if it was the last meeting or the one before, didn't you mention that right now, as of today, or currently, this is one of the worst roads we've got as far as accidents go?
No, not the worst, not accidents, but UDOT doesn't like this, and they're, they're anxious for this to go away. Now, it can't go away. People access their homes, everything off of it. But this, as soon as it can go away, or it can be lightened, people have a better route to go. They're very in favor of that. They pressure us to do that. They ask us frequently about it. So the idea of getting people to a light, whether it's at Volunteer Drive or at Arrowhead, they're very anxious to see that happen.
So, Michael, let's back up a little bit.
But after ninety-two units, the, the accidents would be an issue.
With Annie's, how many units are being approved right now to be built in there? Well, then, Mark, you come right up here, so I can.
I, I forgot my, my hearing.
So, so, Michael, again.
Yeah.
How many units have been approved for Annie's right now that'll be built in Phase One?
So Commissioner Davis, we have what the first.
No, first phase, twenty-six, maybe here.
So with the first phase of Annie's Acres, we have twenty-six.
Twenty-six?
About a total overall proposed of a hundred and thirty.
But right now, with, with the way our roads are right now, you've got, it can handle how many again?
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two?
And that's per the recommendation of Hales Engineering.
Hales Engineering, Traffic Engineer.
Study, who is specifically looking, I don't wanna say failure, but at what point will it fail?
So, so with the River Run, how many, what phase and how many are gonna be approved for that?
If we go back a few slides, we have the phasing plan. So, another key thing to take into consideration is city code, anytime, so let's say Annie's Acres paused, let's say it didn't progress any further. River Run could not move forward with Phase Two, because currently, our city code, anytime you have a temporary dead end, so not a permanent dead end, so if this was a cul-de-sac, we'd say there's no opportunity, we max that, I believe, at thirty-five units. But if you've got the ability to have a secondary access in the future, we allow you to have fifty units on that temporary dead end. And so the restraint against River Run and Annie's Acres is, between the two of them, there's only ninety-two units that the city's gonna permit. And so until they can work together, or the city and the joint property work together and get some additional outlets, they're not gonna be able to build out all of their phases. Another constraint is our utilities, which kinda play hand-in-hand with where some of these proposed secondary access routes would go.
So, the transportation with the ninety-two units is constraint one. The second constraint is looping of water lines. Obviously, our, all our water lines are out in Main Street. You start running a long dead-end water line and put a hydrant at the end, it can't give as much water as if you put one right at Main Street. And in fact, it dies off fairly quickly after so long. And so we have a, we say fifty units. At fifty units, we need to see a loop of those utilities. Now, pressure utilities, not a sewer or whatever, but pressure irrigation and water. So at fifty units, they would need to loop the water line and the PI line. Right now, there's no water or PI there. Right now, Annie's Acres is bringing water, PI from Main Street down South Lane to come in to feed their first phase. Now, at fifty units, whether it's this fifty, or these guys combined with these, or maybe a couple of these and none of these, whatever combination ends up being, there needs to be a secondary loop of those utilities. One option is along the future right-of-way of Volunteer. Another option is, there's this fire hydrant right, about right there, that comes down from Main Street. Because there is, if we loop it back to the Main Street connection of Volunteer Drive, it'll be essentially still one loop or one connection, because that pipe is actually in the second travel lane, and so the connection is to a stub. And so if we go around and loop back to the same stub, it's still only one stub off of that main line in Main Street. So we've asked the applicant to get to this connection up here. We know where that future road will be. They can run it through the field and make that second connection, so we see a full loop of the water, the water lines. So that's at fifty units.
Annie's Acres first phase is how many?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-seven. And how many in River Run's first?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight.
So that exceeds what we can provide now.
At a, yeah, at a Phase One. So this is for a preliminary for River Run. So we'd also then see a final plat for each phase. So at a, if you could note in the approval, if you do approve it, saying, this is approved, but it is limited by this fifty unit and by this ninety-two unit restriction. And then if there's an application for a final plat, then it's already been noted that that is a restriction.
And we're tying these two projects together.
Yeah.
Mike or Brandon? Oh, there you are. Is there a reason why the northern part of this property's not part of the development?
Which northern part?
So if you look at this.
Up here?
Are you referring to the lot A?
That piece right there.
So that is the area that the city's been purchased to expand the fairgrounds.
There you go. Oh, can I, a few more?
Sometimes Mike and I share.
Where, like?
So, yeah, so this is a piece that the city's.
Thank you, Kim.
And it's vital for ongoing improvements in parking and associated uses with the fairgrounds.
Yes, yes, we can say one on that one.
If there's no questions for staff, I'd love to turn some time over to the applicant.
I've got a question for staff, just, just before we do that. So this South Lane, once, Mike, those other two roads get put in at some point, what will South Lane become?
Okay, great question.
Will it always be in existence?
So the plan would be, as soon as we have this connection through, a main connection with a signal, then this could be ended, cul-de-sac, whatever you wanna call it. And this would be then just a local road servicing then. The idea would be then, once the commercial comes in, there would be some sort of tie or an outlet to that road. So these people that front, I think there's three houses that front this road.
Right.
From the north end anyway, they could then get to the light without having to make a full loop back around. But the idea is we'd wanna close it as soon as we, as soon as it made sense to do it.
Is that a preference not to, to like right in, right out movements?
Their preference would be to close it, but it, right in, right out, there'd be some talks at that point. Our plan right now is to leave it open. The idea is, most people would wanna go to a signal, not come here and try and make a left across four or five lanes of traffic. We wanna make this as appetizing as possible. So, these would both go in, so I should probably finish that. Both of these will go in, that's the plan. This would then be a narrower, more of an access road that would lead into the commercial, that it could be a fall-through into the residential subdivisions, but it'd be more of a sixty, seventy-foot right-of-way instead of a hundred, a hundred and ten plus. Where this one that comes through on Arrowhead would be more of a collector-type road.
So the northern road, though, that wouldn't go in until that property developed, is that right? The city wouldn't just go in and put that road in, would they? So they would wait for development, so that could happen?
Or if there's some work, I mean, they need the road, the development out there needs the road to finish their build-out of a hundred and plus of both of them. So it may be a joint effort between the three properties to, to get it put in and connected, and then, anyway, go ahead, Brandon.
I think you, were you referring to this one that comes?
No, sorry, the Volunteer Drive.
And they would need that. I mean, there are seventy-four between the two first phases now. The, either their second phase is gonna put them over the ninety-two.
Yeah. Yeah.
How many in Annie's total?
Scott, Annie's total?
One-ninety, uh, one-thirty.
Scott's got all the numbers for us. One-thirty and what's River Run's total?
One-ninety-eight.
One-ninety-eight? Okay.
You're over three-hundred.
So what was, what was Annie's plan as far as phases? Was they gonna do one phase, then start another phase maybe after that? Was they gonna try to get the roads approved?
Phase Two is planned to be this one here. So one, two, three, I can't remember, four, five, six. But then it comes to a timing thing where we've asked Annie's Acres and River Run to work together. Like, you have a limited number of units here, Scott's the engineer for both of them. Come up with some amicable way to keep them both building.
So if you talked to both of them, so they, and they've tried to work that out, or how's that?
I have, I don't know if that conversation's happened.
'Cause if you turn around and we approved one plot and then Annie's was, was considering doing another phase, and all of a sudden that has to be stopped because of road conditions and stuff like that, and we've already approved Annie's first and so forth and so on, I just want to know the basis of that.
Yeah, they're both aware of the limitations, um, they both know each other, so we're hoping to sit down in the same room. Hopefully, we can approve enough, they can build, and then work through the road construction, and they build their units. You know, six, eight months to build the units, um, then they aren't slowed down between the two of them. But I don't know if you want to speak to that, I don't...
Yeah, let's go ahead and hear from the developer.
This is Sam.
Hi, I'm Sam Drown, I'm the developer and builder, Concord Homes. Where to start? First, I'm really grateful to be here tonight, this has been a long time in the works. There's been lots of people involved in this with the staff, lots of going back and forth meetings, great conversations with the developers on either side. And I think we've come to something that works for everybody and that meets your general plan. And we've had a, we had a very productive neighborhood meeting. And I feel like although obviously in this situation, not all neighbors want to see development go forward, I think they got, we got to a place where they could at least live with what we're doing. And, and others are very happy with what we're doing. I think we've, architecturally speaking, we're, we're not shooting for minimums, we're shooting for something that is beautiful and looks high-end. Adfinity-wise, we've packed the subdivision with amenities, beautiful clubhouse, pool, we've got parks, playgrounds, barbecues, pickleball courts, which are all the rave, as you know, in Spanish Fork now. We've, we've done our very best to make this a place where we feel like there's gonna be very high demand and it's gonna add to your city and not detract from it. A couple of the, um, I'll wrap up my comments real quick, 'cause I'm sure, I'd rather spend my time answering your question. But we're very aware that we can only go so far, as is Annie Acres, without that second access going in. So whether their understanding as well as ours is whichever one of us needs it first is gonna have to put it in and the other one's gonna have to pay their share of it, it's as simple as that. They understand that, we understand that, I've met with them and I think we're gonna, it's, it's, it's gonna work out good for both of us.
Is there anything, sorry, with that, have you guys actually documented, signed anything, or is this just a verbal agreement?
We don't have anything documented, but it's, um, we will have to do that at some point, but it really takes care of itself because that's what the city requires of us. So if Annie Acres wants to move forward when they need it, they've gotta put it in. The city code requires that we reimburse them for our share of it, or vice versa. So it really takes care of itself, okay? Questions? Yeah.
It appears to me that if Annie's Acres, first phase is twenty-seven, uh, units, and your first phase is forty-eight, you're up against it right now. Somebody's gotta build the road.
All right, we're, we're looking at it as if we're gonna have to put in that road, just do our second phase. That's how I see it planning out.
Uh, but you wouldn't be able to complete the first phase because you would be over the, is it?
Ninety-two.
For the road, they would be able to, for the utilities, they would not, right?
Yeah, so utilities, they'd be over, but for the ninety-two units tied to the second access that you still under.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're talking about two different things, right? That's correct.
But you would, they would be required to run the complete loop through all phases, you know?
Yeah, so they could build first phase if they loop the line from here across and down to connect where they have to bring their water for their first phase anyway. So there'd be a water line here and that would be able to do their first phase and stay under the ninety-two units. And then with their second phase and/or Annie's Acres or whatever combination, then the, the road connection to Main Street, Volunteer Drive would be needed.
Mike, what's the timeline again on the Arrowhead Trail connection?
When we, we've, we're talking to MAG about it, getting funding for it, seeing how much we can get.
So realistically, if MAG approves that, how much time would it take the city, including the bridge, to put in a road like that?
Construction season, I mean, you have right-of-way acquisitions you need to do, need to get your fundings, three, four million dollars. And then not only the city's match of, we have to get city's match, plus we have to get MAG's funding for it, so it's not a quick...
It'd be five to ten years.
So we're looking at years, okay?
For a, for a second?
To build it would be a year, but the lead-up, the funding, everything else would be in that timeframe.
The other one's the priority, the volunteer.
Because we'll be doing, the main, the volunteer one will be doing.
I see. And that's realistically the next one that would be done.
Correct. Yeah, the, the other one, the one they're talking about is more of a major collector. I mean, that goes well beyond the needs of our project.
Yeah, this would be unassociated with theirs, this was just more of a regional look at how does their subdivision play into our regional plan. This is a city-MAG, large, little longer-term project, this is a, they need it for them, short-term.
Have you and Annie's Acres had that conversation then, that you may have to put that Volunteer Drive road in?
We're, both parties are very aware of that.
Third-party, the property owner? There, have you spoken with them, what's, what's their, I wish they were here tonight too, that we could talk to them about it.
That's correct, the commercial, you're talking about the commercial property owner to the west, correct. Yeah, we've been in many, they're anxious for this to happen as well because it makes their commercial project viable. So everybody's got kind of aligned motivations here to get that done.
So with that volunteer road, would, would that hit our, the two developments with the road and the water? Would it?
The water would need to be looped from up here.
Right, but I'm just saying, but the, the, make it so traffic and everything else, the volunteer road, if that was put in and brought into both subdivisions, would that meet all those homes getting built?
Yes.
So for ninety-two now, they're gonna be three-hundred-and-twenty-eight.
That would make it work.
Fine Volunteer Drive.
Yeah, UDOT might make us do a right-in, right-out here, so you can't turn left off of it. But more than likely, we'd leave, that would stay open and so that'd be one, two. And then you do have River Bottoms Road, it's not a hike past you road by any means, but that's, those are secondary.
Is this road going to be made available? Uh, where are you going to come through the water? Will it be available for traffic?
We're talking, that's, um, this is UDOT's salt shed and everything else here. That is what we'd like to see, is a road through there, connecting to a future, maybe expansion of fairgrounds, et cetera, here. That would be ideal. So we've had them showed in the plans, a connection here to River Bottoms Road. And more likely would be then a entrance into this part of the fairgrounds.
Is there a concern about River Bottoms Road? That is a very narrow road. You really have troubles on Second East where the old Bishop's storehouse is and stuff like that. Is that really, is, you really, that's probably your last place you'd like to see?
Yeah, transportation planning says get the roads as far away from hills and mountains as possible because they're at least effective the closer you get. So our goal is to create more enticing alternatives out in the middle, connections to Main Street. And this hopefully would then turn into more of a local, local road to the, the few houses that are along here.
So this road in green here that actually comes through the river, or through the fairgrounds, is that something that is actually viable?
The green is the trail, this is the concept of where we could put a trail, the blacks are the roads.
Not a road?
Nope.
But there's no restrictions, they, that's just making ease of use is what's keeping them off River Bottoms.
Yeah.
Is there any way that we could put, you know, barriers or something to restrict access so there's a roadway through there, but so traffic doesn't get out and go up on River Bottoms? And that's a concern, that's not a good road to have lots of traffic down.
Yeah, it's not, high school kids love driving it.
Yeah.
Um, we haven't looked at, but it's a good thought.
Yeah, this, this one concerns me a little bit because if I lived in this subdivision, you know, it seems like it might be very tempting to go this way and out Second East and Claw and Clear South.
We hope they'd come to a signal, freeway would be either a volunteer entrance over to Main Street, or Center Street when that becomes a freeway interchange, or Arrowhead down to a freeway interchange, or Main Street to an I-15 interchange and a commercial associated, rather than River Bottoms Road, then to another street, to another street, then to get over. But yeah, this road would not be built with this development, as this would not be built with this development. It's a hope for the future, bigger-term project, but...
I've got a question for you, if, if this is approved, uh, how soon before you start that first phase?
Immediately.
Immediately, so you'd want to start moving dirt this winter?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, and these guys are, are trying to get going. So you'd really be up against it to get that water connection and, uh, and the other road? Whatever, whatever way you choose.
So if you talk to the landowners with, uh, where that other road's gonna go into Volunteer?
Yes, sir.
And that they're agreeable of selling you the ground and building the road and everything else?
Well, our plan is not to purchase the ground. The, I guess a couple of clarifications, the city's requiring their transportation, correct me if I'm butchering the verb this year, but they're requiring that road to go through, we're not. I mean, this is part of your master transportation plan. So we're not required to buy the property from them. However, if we need the, so if they were developed, right, they would have to put that road in. And then when, if I were to develop later and I connect to it, then I gotta pay them back for my share of the road. So once again, it's really just a timing issue.
Are they, are they paying now or are they paying later? The property owners, the, the third party, if that road goes in right now, it's between you and Annie's Acres.
Right.
Are they willing to contribute to the cost now, or are they gonna wait until they develop and then reimburse it?
My understanding, the way in the city, the development agreements are the, you call them a collector agreement or a laycomer agreement or something like that, is that when they go to develop, basically when they connect to it, that's when they would be required to pay their shares of it.
So yourselves and Annie's?
Or, or Annie's if they...
Annie's Acres then are, are running the cost?
That's correct, it's just a matter of who's running the cost for it.
So are you going to be required to purchase that right-of-way, or is that part of, what they are doing is, is dedicating that right-of-way for the street?
That's correct, we do, we do not purchase the land from them.
Just the?
Just the building part.
Yeah, it's a public road, it'll be the city's.
You're gonna build it.
We're gonna build it. Well, we may build it, or Annie's Acres may build it, or they may build it. It's just a matter of timing of who's gonna pay for it.
Would we, would it be required that this road have a sidewalk and curb and gutter?
Yeah, it'll be a full city street, curb, gutter, sidewalk, plan a strip.
It'll match with the Volunteer Drive and you said it would?
It'll be narrower.
Will they put the trail system in at the same time? You're gonna put the trail system in at the same time?
You've got the green there.
Uh, my understanding is, well, at this point, we've been asked by the staff, after long deliberation on this, is to dedicate, is to dedicate an easement for the trail, which is what that green line is off of our property. But I'm not sure what the timeline is, is of when that would get, be built.
So Mike, the only concern I have, at least looking at this design, is this piece of property right here. It's like you're making, if the road were to be put in like that, you're making an island out of that little piece. I don't know what that property owner would, would be able to do with it.
You're right.
There, I know there's been a lot of discussions about with, um, with that property owner about that. I don't know if there was ever, they were ever satisfied on that, I know it's come up.
I know we had initially, or at one point, had talked about a roundabout. Why don't we take this road straight up, do a roundabout and cut across and make this a rect?
Scott, did you ever do a different design on that? This is an older version of it. Scott's the engineer for both, so it's actually really handy because then they always tie together.
So we had that, we had a little different one with the roundabout. The traffic study came back that there was no need, and in fact, the roundabout encourages east workflow to River Bottoms, which we want to avoid. We also had a different layout before where we clipped the, that's Wayne Peterson's property and it gave him a lot narrower sliver in there than, so is that image Annie's that comes up?
Yeah, the old Annie's is the darker here.
I don't think that's current, I think we go up farther, we do, we go up and square it off, that, that angle isn't there, so it gives a more usable piece to Wayne, which the, the same, Wayne and Kelly have been involved and talked with us and seen these, but I don't want to speak for them that they're totally happy with it. But we did get rid of the roundabout, which was troubling to them because of the right-of-way it would take and the traffic study supported that, so.
So what happens to this piece, does it grow or shrink, or?
It's more of a ninety-degree that would be incorporated into their development. So it's not gonna have that radius right there.
Incorporated into Annie's Acres?
Uh, into Wayne's piece, so.
In this piece.
The red line?
I haven't had the class. Right, so it would go straight up and straight over, and then they would incorporate that into their product, the project, when and if that happens someday, but.
Sorry?
So we won't create that weird little pie shape, because I agree, that's pretty unusable.
That'd become more of a four-way intersection, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, squares that off to where some units would fit in there.
The Petersons are okay with that?
Petersons are aware of it and have worked with us on a lot of issues here, and they're better with that than the roundabout, but I don't want to put words into Wayne's mouth that he's, he can tolerate it maybe, but he, he hasn't been against it. We, we did that in, just for that reason, because it's a good point, it's undevelopable, little sliver we believe in.
Mike, I've got a concern over, specifically last meeting, there was quite a bit of uproar about the construction that's going on, on that south road. It's narrow to begin with besides all the, the utilities that's going in. Is there, is there any reason for this particular project to, to put more pressure on getting that volunteer road in sooner than later? Because it seems like there's been quite a bit of discussion in these meetings for the last six months that that River, that River Bottoms Road, just everything funnel on the Main Street is just really getting to be... I know this traffic study showed otherwise, but it seems like it's a problem now. And you get two projects going at the same time, big trucks and construction workers and local citizens trying to use a road that they've been used to. And maybe we can't do anything about it, but is this a, does this have a unique situation that we may choose to accelerate that volunteer drive?
Right. Dave might have some comments on this as well, but personally, the development occurring here is the quickest way to fix the problem. If it was already a kind of issue before, the issue is not the local residents who live here, it's the people coming as a pass-through road.
Yeah, from other parts of town.
Coming from other parts of town, right?
Yes, construction.
Construction, yeah, construction traffic. And if, if we didn't do anything today and there was no construction, um, there's still gonna be growth that occurs. So the amount of people coming off the East Bench, there's more houses being built there every day. They're still gonna keep using this road and there's gonna be more and more cars happening. So the construction has a start and an end. That growth that's gonna be passing through, not the residents that live here, or could live here, but the residents that live up here, that's gonna keep getting worse. And so with Sam's project and Annie's Acres happening, that's the only way that this gets funded. The city really doesn't go in and just build brand-new roads speculatively. Usually, are we, we wait for development to cause those to happen. There's a little growing pain in the middle because you have construction traffic, dump trucks, everything happening. But then the road gets installed. And so, and the residents that are, are here to live in these areas, they've felt that, that pinch. The people that come through, we've gotten calls, "I, I can't get through here, I have to go around." How long is this gonna be the case? But this is the method that that will become a better situation.
But you're thinking East Bench people are gonna come down, take this, turn here, work their way up, back, over and around, instead of coming down?
Or come here. I mean, if, once this is closed, that will be their option, or they'll come here. Full build-out will be, this will be the road, they come.
Or they'll just keep going up River Bottoms.
Or River Bottoms.
Or they'll stop using that road and go up the canyon route?
Okay.
So would Southfield Road here, let me see. As we are right now, that wouldn't be abandoned until there is something that goes on here at Arrowhead?
More than likely.
And just stay right, right?
Probably be a right in, right out.
Right. Right, right.
Right, 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 right.
If that stays the same, is there any kind of proposal or anything to improve that road from the corner to Main Street?
Besides putting it back to generally how it was, twenty-nine or so, twenty feet of asphalt or whatever it was, probably not. Now, one day to have curb gutter sidewalk in that, yeah, as Annie's Acres will put curb and gutter on the north side. Sam's project will put curb and gutter on the east side here. As develop happens, it will be improved as it goes, but it won't be a city project or a requirement of these two developments to go in and improve the road. But the idea is the, what's been dug up today will be put, will be put back.
What's your dotted line that you've got right here?
Um, a guess of how these roads could connect to a bigger road here.
So this this road that goes past the new development, there is a ditch that comes under the road and continues along that side, the north side. Are they gonna be required to pipe that ditch in front of their property there on that property?
Yes.
Is that part of what you'll do?
To another point, that's a really a pinch point right there as Kentwell knows. And so we're trimming that corner a little bit to help that too. So there'll be widening of the road and then a little bit of a widening to clip that corner. So you have a better sight distance right there.
Good corner, Scott?
Yeah, exactly.
That'll be good.
And then if this, of course, if if commercial development happens in here, they would pipe that ditch on down to Main Street, I would imagine.
Yep.
How many, how many customers are on the west side of Main Street on that ditch?
I don't know. I don't know if anyone here knows.
You, you guys know, I I think there's only one or two now. The only one that I know of for sure is Gardner's still have.
I've never seen a irrigate across from the duck out directly south. But I've yet to have been called to water or you take the lead straight water or water that's on, really. That's the only one I'm aware of.
This ditch also carries wastewater from the system and takes it down under Main Street and across and dumps back into the mill race. You know, down behind the ballpark. So it's, it's gonna be an active ditch for a while, but it may be able to be smaller. If you didn't have any, any customers on the west side, or if those customers could make use of the secondary irrigation and abandon that ditch as an irrigation ditch and just make it a drainage ditch.
There's enough spring water, you know, from people, they need to do that over, you know, they have most of the people out and have to share, share whatever that they have found. But they take that stream of water. It is, they've made arrangements with me, would you just put some on yours and I'll just take a little bit. Otherwise, he he gets rather.
They can't take a full stream.
But the spring water is usually available. I use it on my field all the time.
Yes.
Like, if the city was doing all that construction, I'm reportedly asking if I would divert water through my infrastructure.
I see that this field that's on the commercial side here has been worked up. It looks like they're getting ready to plant something there. I don't know who's running it or who's who's leasing it.
Oh, it would be, uh, Hales. The chairman of the previous.
Lynn, Lynn Hales.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And he said, he just kind of thought of that.
Yeah.
Or the one part of the plan, right, so then all his plans are on the ground.
Well, we've heard from developers and some questions. You guys want to go into public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. We'll go ahead and go into public hearing if there's anyone that would like to comment on this zone change and preliminary plat. Okay, hearing done, we'll close the public hearing. Any other discussion? Questions on this?
Honestly, the roads are the biggest concern for me.
Yeah, me too.
What John mentioned in your email the other night is the biggest concern. But it sounds like the two developers have communicated, at least through phases, on how much they can build until the remaining roads and utilities get put in. So it sounds like that's, in a sense, been resolved and we know and they know how much, how much would be able to be built, be built until, until those new connectors get put in.
I do have one question for Dave. Dave, does this high-density development fit in with what the city's plan has been for this kind of property and this property specifically?
Yeah, in a couple of different ways it does. First of all, the general plan explicitly has this identified as high-density residential. The R three zone that's requested coincides well with that general plan designation. The limit on density is twelve units to the acre in that zone. I think these guys are at about eleven or so. That low, really? That's with parcel, that's with parcel, or that lot to the north, really? I would have guessed that it was higher than that, obviously. So they're, they're underneath that twelve, but for me, maybe even more importantly, you've got Main Street, pretty significant thoroughfare. Typically, we try to take advantage of intersections like the volunteer drive and Main Street intersection to encourage non-residential development to happen there. And particularly with that property, sixteen or so acres. The vision I know that the city's had for that is that perhaps that someday would be a site for a grocer to serve that part of the community. And generally speaking, we try to put fairly intense land uses next to that, like an R three zone, something like this. Stepping down from townhomes then into, for example, what the Bradfords are doing with Annie's Acres and then into, you know, something that's even density. Uh, that's kind of the pattern you see throughout the community. And it's a long answer, but yes, I think it it is exactly what we envisioned.
That's what I was looking for is what the city has envisioned and how the high density gives way to moderate density into low density as you move away from the major thoroughfares and the commercial businesses.
Come on back over, Dave. I know you're having a hard time talking.
That's great.
Not coughing, so. You know, some of the planning commission's concerns over the last year to eighteen months of how our projects look. Street view and three-dimensional and colors and there was a little bit of time spent on this. And maybe we could hear from the developer again to be more specific, but how do you feel the developers has addressed some of the spirit of what the planning commission's had? With, with respect to really having a nice product when we're done?
The architecture.
Yeah. Uh, first of all, and it's been a few months since we had a really candid conversation about project design and some of the misses that we've had in the past. But I've appreciated the commission's candor over the course of the past several years. I remember somewhat vividly meeting with Mr. Drown probably a year or so ago when we were starting to look at some of his initial designs for the project and having a very explicit conversation with him about the city's expectations and some concerns that some of us on staff had that are kind of the result of his site and how with its width and length, that's kind of that maybe aspect ratio almost. It really lends itself to potentially having a really repetitive kind of monotonous streetscape. Just because, you know, straight road, you get almost a kind of a regimented kind of a, a look to the design. And I think he's done a great job of including a lot of interesting, I would say, elements to the design of the proposed townhomes so that you don't have a blockish, monolithic kind of look to the buildings. There's variety in terms of change of planes, roof lines, different things like that that they brought in to make it more interesting. And I think as, as you drive down that street, it'll convey that, that feeling very, very well. So that that started with conversations that we had with you.
Yeah.
And direction that you gave and it's been fairly easy for us to pass that on to applicants like Mr. Drown.
As you're going down that street, you feel that's gonna be, it's not gonna look blockish or uniform? I mean, as you're going down, would that be east-west? But as you're going down that street one, what are we doing to break up the view from, as you're looking down that? It looks to me like it looks very blockish from that perspective.
What we've talked specifically about doing is making sure that the ends of the buildings don't look like the ends of some townhomes that have been built throughout the community for the past several years. So adding more visual interest to the ends as well as the, particularly the elevations that will face into the courtyards, which is what I think we're seeing with that, that other image that we have in the presentation. Keeping in mind as well that we have eight-foot park strips throughout the streets or tree-lined streets, which I think, you know, obviously day one, there's not gonna be a lot to that, but ten years. That absolutely makes a tremendous difference in terms of just making that and inviting a comfortable place to be. And Sam, I'd certainly welcome any thoughts that you have on that.
We have renderings, three-D renderings.
Oh.
I don't know why they're not up here, but we have wraparound porches on all the street sides. There's changing elevations on the street sides. Anywhere, there's one porch portion on the street side where there is, you know, it does go up two stories and that's where specifically putting trees there. We also have like decorative fencing sections, believe it or not, between each building and then the pathways that go up in front. They're alley-loaded, so you have courtyards in front of every unit, sidewalks that go over to each of them. It's, you know, we've gone almost overkill probably on the landscaping to address these issues. But if they can find the, get us the renderings, you could actually, we could show you exactly what it would look like.
Okay.
So the front elevation that we got, will that just, is that the only elevation that will be there in other wills? Is it going to repeat on each one of the buildings? Or do you have something different?
I I would like to look at maybe changing that up, but we've got one designed right now. And I don't know if we're limited on changing it based on this approval or not, but my preference would be to change it up every now and then. But, you know, at this stage in the game, it's hard to put, you don't want to fully design every building. It's extremely expensive to do that.
Right.
Yeah, so you can see, if you, if you were to see this.
That'd be the street view, that that Main Street.
Right. And if you were to see this on the landscaping plan, you could see how we've incorporated the street side with the landscaping.
And just maybe to reference this real quick, we have talked, for example, about extending a Wayne's Coat around this elevation here.
Which we've done.
So there would even be additional improvements from what we're looking at right here. Certainly, the site layout is really repetitive. There's no, there's no way you can say it. But I think this does provide a little glimpse into what you'd feel where you have, I hesitate to call it open space or park space, but it's gonna have kind of a garden feel, you know, in between each of the buildings. The backsides are different. So you'd go from this to no man's land, really, with the rear-loaded garages. Not necessarily the, the best site to lend itself to creating, you know, a lot of, a lot of visual interest that you can get with some curvature to a road and that type of a thing. But at the same time, with the site being the way that it is, I don't know that you can do much more than what they've done.
And I would like to point out, this is not the most recent rendering. We've added stone, we've added trees. We've done a lot more than you see right there on those sides. And I don't know if they can find the most recent, but it's better than that.
Okay.
Good. Cause that's not, that's not awful.
Yeah.
No.
It's better than that.
Well, appreciate those efforts to, to meet that. Well, I'm back to the roads. How's that? I'm really, really, really concerned about them. So I'm back to Annie's again, Dave. Come on back up and Michael. According to what Annie's was planning to do with their development, they said they had twenty-seven units planned out right now to goal. Was they planning on any other developments coming in within the next year or less or what was they talking to us about?
We've had multiple meetings with the Annie's Acres developers and Mr. Drown and his engineer together to where I don't think there's any question among either group about what the limitations are or anything like that.
They start selling units and stuff like that, they're gonna jump on their next phase and everything else. And so without another road being built into this, it's gonna collapse the system and somebody's gonna be holding. And you, you said you've talked with them, but I don't know that.
Well, maybe, maybe to that question though, we do have a development agreement that's done, that the council has approved. Actually, because Annie's Acres wants to change their phasing plan, it needs to be amended. But the exact provisions that have been described tonight relative to how many units can be built in Annie's Acres before a second access is provided and that type of a thing and how many units can be constructed in the area before there's a connection to Main Street, that's, that's described very explicitly in the development agreement that Mark Warner, you're kind of representing Annie's Acres.
One phase, two phases?
And, and you know, that's really, we won't define how many phases they can or can't do. It's really up to them to decide whether they want to do ten lots in a phase or twenty or whatever. But the ceiling of fifty before they address the issues that have been described, the ceiling of ninety-two before there's a connection to Main Street, that's been described. We certainly anticipate having a development agreement for Mr. Drown that would have identical language. And to date, and I appreciate the way that Mr. Drown described it, I think everybody is working towards the same goal. And while, you know, fifty does sound like a small number, frankly, we don't have a lot of builders in the community right now that are getting through a lot more than fifty units in a year, certainly. I have a couple of exceptions, right? That's almost bizarre exception.
We just drove through one.
It's thirty in thirty days, but, but truthfully, so I, I see them having a full construction season very easily to get through full sales season before we'd be close to bumping up against those limits. I think they understand that. Mr. Clark put it really delicately, but I, I appreciate the way that he described that relative to traffic, things will get worse before they get better. There's just no, and that's, we've had that conversation about other areas, other roads, other projects. That's the reality. But yet at the same time, development like we're seeing here probably is the best way to make improvements that will happen incrementally. Unfortunately, it's a slow process and there are other issues that come with construction, that type of a thing that are hard for neighbors to, to deal with. But we think this is more of the solution than, than what problem would be created by the homes that are gonna be built.
Okay, so Mr. Drown, if we approve this, how soon can you have that road built, the volunteer drive? With, with Annie's, with Annie, with you and Annie's working together, how fast could you get that road built?
Because that, that road, that road is a long ways from where your first phase is. And it's a long ways. It's right off of the very end of Annie's Acres. So, so you're gonna go through a lot, I mean, to build that road is a lot of time, effort and money to get that road in for both entities.
But they're gonna have to if they want to continue building.
Yeah, that, well, and that's my concern is that most developments don't do that, you know? They come and get their first, come to their first intersection, that's your first phase, the second phase, the third phase. And so that concerns me that we're, we're, we're counting on you building this road nearly to the very end of. And so that concerns me, that we're, we're, we're counting on you building this road nearly to the very end of the property. And the same thing with Annie's Acres. Now, they might be able to come to here and, and bring that road into here, and that might satisfy things. But nonetheless, that road has got to come to here before it can come out to Main Street, right?
Yes, sir, I'm fully-
Well, that's a long, that's a long ways.
I'm fully expecting to have to do that with my second phase. Which, my expectation, if all goes well, that would be twenty twenty-one.
What happens if Annie's start building their second phase first, or their third phase, and it collapses the road system? Then what happens?
Same thing, they can't go any further until they build the road. And then I, when they connect, then I gotta pay them back for my portion.
But what are, they were thinking, okay, well, I can get at least three phases in before you guys even start a phase, and that keeps Southfield Road going, you see what I'm trying to say?
Yeah. Really, that, I don't know how to put it another way, they're saying, they're stuck. Like whether they were anticipating or expecting, wanting, wishing, anything like that, at this point, it's not relevant, and it's in writing. Um, and I think this is good maybe for Mr. Brown to hear, I mean, it, it's a serious-
Well, we've approved theirs, we haven't approved this other one. That's where I'm coming from, and I understand the bit, that when we approve yours, yours is gonna get built and everything else, and that helps infrastructure and everything else. But I'm still, what I'm saying is, is they're, if, if, I'm just trying to think out of the box here a little bit, to the point where they're thinking they can build so many phases before they have to build another infrastructure road, you know? And now you're coming in, and we're gonna give you approval for this, and that sort of throws them off a little bit. You know, you know what I mean? And so, I'm, again, are you, are you willing, once this starts happening, to get this done and everything else?
I, I am a nice guy, but I, this isn't a service project for me, or for them. So, no, am I going to put that road in to be a good neighbor so they don't have to front-load the cost if they need it before I do? No, and they're not gonna do that for me either.
Okay, well, then I see some people out here that live on these other roads, that when you start building, it puts a total collapse on them guys, and they have to go somewhere else to get out of here because of the construction and everything else. So, y- you know, I'm looking at being good neighbors here too, you know? And, and you, I've sat in here for the last three months now, listened to this, this river bottom stuff, and there are concerns in that, and so here, we are now throwing a hundred and eighty-two more units into this and not having the roads and the, and the infrastructures to make it work unless you make that road going into Volunteer Drive. That's where my concerns are.
Is that right?
So my question for that would be, what's the alternative? Do they just front the money right now, put the road in, and then start their phases? Which, I would assume they're gonna want some money from their initial phases before they put those-
Well, every time I've ever seen anybody build anywhere outside of a unit area, they either gotta bring the infrastructures into it to make it work. You know, and then people that buy into that will have to, just like he says, have to pay them back once they, once they build, once they build around that. And that's happened down on the, on the west side of town, on two or three projects where they put every infrastructure in. This is, this, we've only got one road we're playing with right here, and that's that Southfield Road, to bring in all these units. We don't have any other roads to look at, and I don't care what road surveys or anything says about it. I've been down there, and without Annie's being done, or any of this other being done, and, and the traffic's terrible. And so now you're gonna, Annie's throwing all these homes in, and you're gonna throw all these homes in, and it's gonna collapse it so bad, and so we've gotta have another road into there. That's all there is to it. And they've gotta build it. Annie's has gotta build it, and you've gotta build it to make this work. And so, when we start approving plot plans and everything else, we gotta make sure the infrastructures are gonna be done right. That's all I'm saying.
And I, I think we're doing that.
Okay, well.
I think this plan addresses what you've just said, other than whether or not you believe, you know, the traffic report. We didn't order their traffic report, or design the traffic report, or set the limits on the units. We didn't do that, we didn't have anything to do with that. We're just, we're playing by your rules, to say it, the only way I guess I can put it.
So ninety-two units is what they are capped out without having a main, another Main Street. So we're looking at, Annie's has already been approved, so we've got twenty-six, twenty-seven units in Phase One. How many in Phase Two? Is this Phase Two right here?
Uh, I'm believing it's right there.
This is Phase Two? So Phase Two is obviously a lot bigger than what we've got here, so we're now close to fifty, or fifty-plus, I'm guessing. Not even close to this area, like Richard mentioned. Now we get to Phase One of your development, and you're looking at how many units in Phase One?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, you're already at your ninety-two. So you're looking at this unit, and this phase, and this phase before you can do any additional.
Exactly.
Is that right? So when the two of you get these two phases in, what's your plan at that point to get this road in?
Once again, if, if I hit that first, I have to put the road in, to go any further, to build one more unit.
You finish your phase first, they're still working on their first phase. You can't continue until this road is, so you, at that point, plan on funding or fronting the money from this phase all the way up and all the way over.
Right, so my next, my final plat for Phase Two will include that, all the rest of those units up, is it up to the road, or the one building after the road?
I think it's like that.
I don't even know if that, that drawing's not even, I don't even think completely up to date, but, right, so.
There we go.
See, I haven't had the school yet, so. Okay, so here's our Phase Two. It goes from, looks like right there, that's the end of it.
Over to that.
And then over to here, and then this road is the one that goes through.
Right.
So that will be my Phase Two, which will, a requirement of that will be, I have to build that road.
Meaning you cannot build a unit?
I can't touch a unit in there.
So this road connects to Main Street.
That's correct.
Is that the road curb and gutter?
Everything.
So Annie's finishes Phase One first, you guys aren't quite done. Does Annie's have intentions, or would they, from their development, try and get up to Volunteer Drive? Or are you, is it more realistic to wait for, for you guys to get to your Phase Two?
Well, I can't, I, I can speak to that, they understand that that's the problem for both of us. I can't speak to whether or not they would wait it out and let me front the cost, or if they would go ahead and do it.
Cause looking at the map, it makes more sense for you to front the cost, that you're gonna get to that road quicker going through your development than ours.
Yeah, and, and if it comes to that, and if that's their decision, and they wait on me, then I, it's not like I have a say in that. I just have to go ahead and do it.
But no phases continue until that road gets put in.
Right. And the nice thing for you guys is, is, once again, this doesn't require any agreement between Annie's Acres and I. We don't have to play nice or like each other, or even have another meeting. This is what your, the development agreement talks about, calls out, what your code requires of us, so, you know, we don't, we don't have to agree on this. And the same thing with this guy, you know? If he wants to do it, he's gotta build it.
Any kind of a timeframe do you think that would take to, you know, let's say you get to that ninety-two for either one of you, how long would it take to get that road put in?
Oh, the, the, building the road, yeah, it, it, I, I think, building that entire phase, including that road is a, is a, depending on what time of year and all that, it's a, call it a six-month job, it's a typical, there's nothing extreme about the road, you know?
Yeah, okay.
Brad, I've gotta excuse myself, I've got some junior jazzers who are waiting for me, so, gotta go coach back.
Can I, can I make a motion before he leaves, or?
Thanks, you guys.
Do we have any restriction on construction access into the, these sites?
To remember trucks, or?
Remember trucks, or where they're accessing the site? If you have construction going simultaneously on Annie's Acres and this one, coming off that road, it's-
Yeah, we will do work through that.
I mean, it's, it's, it's not just passenger cars, it's big trucks, it's-
And saving where they park?
Yeah.
The trucks, and maybe go in?
And I can see that being, it might be considering ninety-two passenger cars, but it's, it's not considering how many side dumps and, you know, just construction traffic that's coming through there, when you have these two developments going simultaneously.
About the roads, is that a whole?
Well, we closed a public hearing portion.
So do we have any, do we have anything in the development agreement about access or control of that, or?
I think in the development agreement, both when we get to Phase One, we talk about traffic control and start trying to figure that out.
The development agreement doesn't specify it that way. I'll tell you though, I think this is a great example of a situation where some genuine thought should be given to construction access, maybe the construction of some temporary routes and things like that, for construction vehicles to try to limit the impact on roads that we know already have some issues and that type of a thing. So I think that, as a condition of approval, makes a lot of sense, I, and-
I keep that off River Bottoms and Southfields, we, that's, I guess.
I mean, even, um, and, you know, I, I wonder about plans for, I'll always probably call it the Gardner property, you know, and what they might wanna plant there, but I wonder if they, you know, allow somebody to traverse that to go directly from, you know, Main Street over to the site and that type of a thing for purposes of construction. I think those things make a lot of sense to, to explore. I think it could be advantageous for both of the two developments that we're talking about, certainly for some of the neighbors.
But no, we've had any of that conversation with them about putting a, I mean, just a road-based road for construction access now?
You know, we haven't had conversations about that with any developers here. It's common practice in other communities, um, for a lot of reasons, I think. We're maturing to the point to where that probably needs to be part of our normal course of business when it comes to talking about development and limiting impact on surrounding neighborhoods and that type of a thing.
Has there been discussed at all about the ditch that is right along here, the waters this property, and waters to the west?
Isn't that an outside of fence, Kent? You want, that ditch is outside your fence, isn't it? It's off your property, so we won't impact that. Can I mention?
Yes.
I, we need to make this longer, but the, there's a, I feel like you're, it's nice that you're concerned about what you've approved for Annie's Acres, and now you're approving this, but I can speak for them for the fact that they really need this to come in, and they've, because it's a gap between that connection. So they're excited to have Sam participate as a partner, because without them, there's a gap that it shuts them down at fifty, period. Um, not even the ninety-eight, so.
I see.
As far as that, they've known from the beginning, the city's been very clear about that. Um, so they're anxious to have this in too, then. I would think Phase Two's where it's gonna happen, either way for both parties, they're, that's where they're looking.
Fifty would be your limit as well, if you reach fifty first.
Yeah.
For the utilities.
Yeah, but the road won't go up through Wayne Peterson. He has no, he wants nothing to do with that, so that second access has to go through Sam's project. So, everybody's on board with volunteer connecting, so.
I see.
I can't speak for Wayne, he's told me on numerous occasions that he plans on farming until he gets too old, and then, you know, they've, they've talked to him, worked with him, and I've talked to him, and it'd be nice, I'd do the same thing if I had to.
True.
I'm gonna be doing this.
Yeah.
But it has been nice, to be honest with you, if you don't have all that traffic. I'll say, people finally found out that's not a very good road to travel. Like the good old days when we put cows out there and grazed them, and there's two of us on the inside. There's hardly anybody you want to go.
Did your question get answered on the road, or did you wanna? Why don't you come up and ask it?
Well, I was just talking to Dave, okay, so you put these two plots together where we're at now. I don't know if you've driven out there.
Let's state your name.
Oh, Chris Ellsworth. It's not fun, one truck can go by, that's it. You get a construction truck on there, you get anything else on there, that's it, you're stuck. Um, twenty-five, twenty-six feet behind my driveway is your thing, which we came and talked to Mike about. Okay, so we got that answered. The thing I'm wondering is, you're talking about roads, you're talking about them building Volunteer Lane. Thing of it is, is when you get them started, and you've got Annie Acres started, my road shuts down again. Or whatever, they'll let you go by. But you're not gonna stop people from up on the bench coming down there. Even if you build that, even if you build a road through there, they're not gonna take that. They're gonna come straight down, go down seventy-six fifty and out to the highway, or out to the Main Street. They're not gonna cut off and go to any of those roads whether they're there or not. And so, like Dave said, it's gonna get worse before it gets better, which, okay, I understand construction and all that. But we're getting bombarded by people, like today, I was telling Dave, they've put a water line through the road down just towards Main Street from us, shut the road down. School bus comes ripping down there, they get stopped, takes them a half an hour to back up, to get out, to get those kids home. This is the problem that we're up against. I don't know what the construction laws are, or anything like that, but it seems like there's got to be a happy medium somewhere, and not just for us, I understand, to a certain point. But, and it's like Mike said, you know, you can't stop people from coming down that road. Two people have lost oil pans on that road, just past our house, on the curve by Brans. So that's the concern that I have when you talk about roads, is there's nowhere for people to go.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
And one thing I will comment about is, is that whether this is built or not, that's gonna get worse. Because we've got a lot of, of development now on the east bench, near the river bottoms and all that. A lot of that traffic just comes down into the river bottoms. And so, any, anytime we can get that moved forward faster, that's better. But I don't know whether this is going to make it faster or slower, or, because it's true, this, maybe these people will take that road, but probably not the people that are coming from east.
Long-term, once they do their head, then you're planning on that not being a through street.
Absolutely.
That's a long ways down the road.
When you get Arrowhead Trail, that, that'll change it.
They do have a way that, that the bus can turn around now, but, you know, if you have storms or wet, they probably won't go that way, but they've made, two accesses on the Bear property to the north of us. So they, they've just been pulling in, make a circle and go now. So it's been good, but, you know, it's, it's not a paved road by any means, so I'm sure there'd be a lot of times they won't be able to take that road.
Yeah, so on school, they did on Bear property, he said, put a turnaround so the bus can turn around. We have our inspectors check that every day, cause they were dragged down there.
Well, it seems like the, you guys have done a lot of work in trying to get this handled, and it's just, it's just gonna be painful. Uh, and I suspect that if it gets worse, the city will figure out how to deal with it. Won't, it won't come back to, sorry, this is what we got spelled with the ninety-two lots, or whatever. We've got this urgent problem, how we can deal with it, whether it's putting a construction road, or whatever. It just, this is, the, the, the traffic here is just kinda unique to me, compared to a ti- a typical, uh-
Usually you don't go far, and then come closer to the end road, usually you go from the main road out.
Yeah.
As you look at Lexi Farms and a bunch of those, it's, and that's a difficult development. This one, we're starting at a far that's coming in, so a lot of the construction traffic and the pass-through and all that stuff, it's just, it's unique.
Unique, yeah.
This doesn't help anybody that's impacted by this. It's worse, definitely, I think, the most impacted. But the learning curve that we're going through now, I think, as an organization with the issues that we're dealing with here, will definitely make for a better practice and policy in the future.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, we beat this up pretty good. Uh, Commissioners, is there? If there's no other questions.
So sort of certain way that, as we approved this Phase One for you, you know, that we can handle the traffic with the, the construction traffic some way, somehow, so it doesn't impact as much on that road as it possibly can. If you guys could put your heads together somehow and figure that out, that both, that probably you and Annie's, both of you, somehow that you could figure out, I, I agree with what Todd's saying, that the construction traffic's gonna be, really make even a bigger difference on this road than just the regular traffic itself with the, with the new units that are being put on there. Uh, ninety-two units plus the construction traffic is just gonna be horrendous on this thing. So, there's gotta be a way, I think, that if you guys can figure this out as you build, to make it a lot easier on your neighbors and stuff like that, will make it a better deal. I, I just think you need to do that some way, somehow.
I think that's a really appropriate-
Would we wanna see that before the ninety-two is reached, like with those first phases? Are you thinking after those?
Oh, I think right now.
I'm thinking, that's what I think also.
The best-
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, you've already got the traffic- Absolutely. Well, you've already got the traffic reports and everything else, you know. I, you can say what you want to, but right now I think they're failing right now. You're putting all these other units on here. Now you're putting construction traffic like you talked about. It's got to be taken care of right now. You, you've got to have, figure a way somehow, somehow to make this work, so everybody's at least partially happy. Because eventually it will get better, you know, Chris, it will eventually get better. And, and as the units go on, you know, hopefully the Arrowhead Road will get in and that will really be big. You know, you know, that will really be big. But the bottom line is, is we're putting, we're putting a ton of pressure. It's, it has bothered me since I looked at it. Gee, I'm thinking, gee, we're done with the river bottoms for a couple of months and I don't have to worry about this. And all of a sudden, the next thing I know, I've got a hundred and eighty-two units sitting in front of me.
I think that's what the Ellsworths were thinking.
Yeah. You know, I was hoping I didn't have to see you for a couple of months, so. But the bottom line is, is, is you've got to be good neighbors on this, you know, and right now Annie's hasn't worked. You know, I mean, it's been an ugly project and, and, and it's going to turn out to be a good project, it really will, but they've, they've run into some ugly soils conditions and things like that, and you're going to run into them too. The same soil sys- systems are going to be in your subdivision as was in Annie's. And so you've just got to sit down with your construction people when you start this and figure a way to make it better and be a better neighbor. That's all there is to it. Or else, gee, it's, we're going to have, you guys are going to be, we're going to make this and we'll be in Facebook on how big brains we are and...
One positive with where it is at now and then going to this project is Annie's had to run four utilities down this road, three utilities, when including a large storm during high width. Next couple of weeks, all that will be done. They'll start the rebuild of the road and then although there will be more construction traffic, the, the work done in the road will be getting smaller. In fact, the sound will be widening the road on his side here. Including curb better side, et cetera, on that side.
But the soil conditions are going to be the same. And so they need to maybe go talk to Bradford's about how, what they went through, because that's all quicksand through there and you're going to be dealing with the same aspects, and so instead of being not prepared, you need to be prepared. And you need to have your construction, you know, traffic ready to go wherever you can make it work that doesn't put such a burden on everybody else. Anyway, that's what I'm suggesting.
Go through the road closures, we'll leave the rest. And you're right here because there's not utilities in the road that would be just getting off and going into the property. As well as the road being put back together. So those are two positive things going forward.
Michael, can you pull up just like Google Maps? I just have a question. I'd like to run by you. Go by the, the salt shed over here. So you have this road that comes in right here, comes right into the, will be phase three of your property, right? Would it be, I mean, we set a condition that this road, construction traffic comes in, you have to put a road based road in to support heavy vehicles, gets you into your property, gets into back of Annie's Acres, gets us off the roads we're concerned about.
So that's where the future water lane will need to come from. So that is one thought to touch it in. I think it is owned by the city, so the permission to get on there would be requested.
Is the private road?
That's an answer, that's an answer to prayer right there.
I could, I could, I could make a lot of difference.
But if they can use it, whatever that talk, that needs to, that needs to take place. They need to talk to me about getting the water lane somewhere right here. Then yeah, that'd be a secondary. The other issue with this site that makes you think you have a hill here with a pretty bad low passing road here, the only one you can get is here. So if you're talking about developing this, the only way, you can't go this way. Can't really go north, south. You already have the road. The only place to go is east to get a second connection. There's not a bigger collective road over here.
What was it? I mean, we're just talking.
Because we're the construction.
We're just on construction.
Yes, we're just talking construction only.
I know, I know. I'm saying where would that access be other than back to Main Street?
Okay.
Or this.
Well, that would be, that would be it.
You really have, that you need to this project.
I, I were the willing to try and get that done, just to...
Because that would, you know, you wouldn't have the cost of putting in the preliminary road base and everything to Volunteer Lane. You've already got the road over to the property which you, you're planning on anyway, so. You know, I don't think that there would be any kind of requirement other than a, a road you could maintain for your construction.
I would make that a condition of approval, that they identify a construction access before a final plot's approved. That's how I'd phrase it.
You know, and, and maybe Annie's Acres would like to be a part of that as well.
Well, incidentally, Annie's Acres is working to have their, they, they have a, a recordable plat that's been approved. They want to amend that. I mentioned something about their phasing plan changing and a couple of other things. Um, I'll tell you, staff's anticipation is to make a similar condition of approval on their first phase as well when that comes back through here soon. So yeah, I think it's important that they both work together on everything we've talked about as well as that construction access.
Give you some time and the money from your first phase to work on the other road, if that could be worked out.
Man, so I, I, I think that's a great idea. I, I would hope, I don't know why they wouldn't let us do that. My only concern would be is where are we if they say no? I mean, once again, that's private and so is that property that fronts, so it's not like I can't force that issue. I think it's a great idea for us. I don't want the neighbors mad at me any more than you want them mad at you, so I think it's a good all-around solution. But I'm always concerned by somebody saying, well, you can't do this unless you get another property owner to let you use their road or their property for all your construction traffic.
So, so then you go to phase B, you go, okay, then I'm going to have to have extra flagmen, I'm going to have to have extra people like that. They put my construction trucks in and out of the property, so it doesn't, doesn't kill the road.
So you want to know what our, we need a plan for you.
That's right.
For that. I, I, I think that's a great idea. We'll do that for, we'll do that.
That would be, that would be ideal.
Another help for Sam as well would be the phase, it would be this road. So the road actually comes in here. That will be the future lane of the road. But once you get here, the money you'll spend on road base to stabilize a construction road can then be used for your final road. So hopefully, hopefully it won't be a fully sum cost. Do we stabilize you hopefully in the same spot you'll end up putting your future road as well? And your water lane.
Traffic control plan for any project this side should be part of Ace of Middle, yeah.
Take note of that, will you? Okay, got some great ideas there. Uh, does somebody want to put that in the form of a motion?
Me for John, you wrote it down.
I haven't got any more voice. That's going to be too long, will you?
He's about to lost it. Todd, do you want to?
Still a rookie. Give us a, give us a good shot.
You come up with that great idea.
No, I didn't.
So what you're, Dave, what you're saying is we could, we could make a motion to recommend based on having a trap, a construction traffic plan in place.
That works. Thanks, Eric. Yeah.
Okay.
So we're approving the request based upon that condition. Is that?
And all the other conditions and findings.
Okay. So I'd like to make a recommendation.
The one question that I have before we go forward with that is that one of the, one of the conditions by the city is, is that potential purchase of Lot A by the city. You guys are, you guys are well on your way to that and that's understood between the city and you guys, right?
How is that worded? I'm sorry?
It's worded that the act can enter into a development agreement that addresses the potential purchase of Lot A by the city.
Okay, yes, I'm, that's what we've talked about. I just wanted to make sure Dave.
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
Sam gives us fire, right?
Yeah, one dollar plus.
Well, yeah, no. As long as that's all.
Yeah, that, that's worded fine with me.
Richard, one, uh, single slot about the soil. They, some, some people, uh, sounded pretty set it up this way and they decided they're going to do their test holes. They didn't know what alfalfa was, so they go up and down from the north to the south, all the, up. Put ten test holes, let, let these old mounds, made a drill back so I hope they know something about that.
Just have sharper blades on your swather.
Sure.
Four-wheel drive.
That's right.
The alfalfa in all.
Can I make a run of this again?
You may.
Yeah, go for it.
Um, so I'd like to make a recommendation that the River Run's townhome zoning change and primary plat approval request be approved based on the findings and conditions made by staff with the addition of that we have a traffic control, uh, construction route plan added to the conditions.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Yeah, very good.
You bet. Excited for your project.
I can't wait to get on Facebook tomorrow.
Yeah, we probably got two subjects, don't we?
Five minute break.
We got that plus we got the entire fifteen. Let's take a, let's take a quick five-minute leg stretch.
Okay, I'll call the leg stretch.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and get going with our meeting.
Well, too bad.
Meanwhile, Utah beat them.
This public hearing, Dave.
Yes, sir. Some change.
I shouldn't have to ask after five years.
I think Utah State.
I think it's always. What? I think it's always.
Yeah, true.
They got beat by Saint Mary's the other day. That's Saint Mary's stuff. I still think, I just don't know. Meanwhile, you seem like the guy, Utah State basketball.
Well.
Okay, we appreciate you guys hanging around.
Oh, yeah.
We got the good stuff on the end.
Thank you for happy to be here.
I don't even know what it is.
I've seen a couple of these.
Well, you've seen what we're like.
I can't remember.
And you're still here, so that's a good sign.
Did they, did they? Did they have child?
Okay, next item on the agenda, rid line, parkway, community zone change and preliminary plat approval request.
We've talked about this project a few different times in the past several years. Uh, it's kind of a first for the community in a couple of different ways. And I'm just going to dive into some of the specifics, even though I think there might be people here that know more about some of it than I do.
Thank you.
I'm not a big audience tonight. We're talking about property that's located on the southwest corner kind of of Spanishford Parkway. Where it intersects with State Road fifty-one. Incidentally, Spanishford Parkway is intended to connect over the railroad tracks and Spanishford Parkway on the other side. That'll probably happen in the next couple of years. Which will really make this a very prominent intersection effect in the community. There's development underway to the north of the subject property here. That property is currently zoned commercially to the north. The plan is to add to the preschool that was finished this past summer with professional office buildings. I think there's a fair chance that a, a number of the tenants there probably will have some kind of medical orientation to them. But kind of like we talked about earlier as well, just, you know, land use patterns and that type of a thing. Not unique in that we have a really significant transportation route going through the community. We try to work with the development community to take advantage of certain locations along that route, prominent intersections that have non-residential development like what I just described, and then typically the locations that flank that non-residential development become good candidates for some higher intensity kind of residential use. I can't remember if it was two thousand and fifteen or two thousand and sixteen, a couple of years. And I think you're the last commissioner standing that really went through from start to finish with us the development of a residential four zoning district. You saw it on the council's side, I believe, though. And it's simply a concept that would allow for a higher density type of residential use than what previously was allowed in the community.
What does that go up to, like eighteen, doesn't it?
Up to eighteen, and we'll talk about that incidentally in just a minute. This would be the first property in the community to actually be owned R four if the council ultimately approves that. So in that respect, like I said earlier, it's something new for us. As, uh, there was very detailed investigation and research done by the planning commission back when the zoning provisions for the R four zone were developed. We spent several different evenings out looking at different developments throughout the valley. Saw quite a few, I think, that the planning commission didn't necessarily appreciate, saw a few that we did. And really trying to tailor the zoning provisions of the R four zone around the ones that we liked. Incidentally, project in Springville. I hope I, I can still come to work after complimenting Springville here, but, um, I think they did a great job with the outlet compartments and zoning provisions that they put into place that that have led to how that's developed over the years. Largely, we've tried to replicate that. So the model that we'll look at here largely follows that, public streets. The idea that that's the best way to create a sense of community rather than more of an institution, institutional kind of feel. Excuse me, or, uh, almost like a compound. Kind of a, a feeling in a neighborhood. And hey, thanks. And we appreciate this developer working with us for now, well over a year to, to get to where I think the real intent that we have with the R four zone has potentially met very, very well. So Mike, can you go to the next line real quick?
Dave?
Yeah.
This is, you know, we, we've seen this piece of ground maybe two or three times. Has most of that been given feedback of what we'd like to see? We've not necessarily earmarked this for what proposal is tonight. What kinds of activities have we done on this project so far to keep the focus on this? Does that make sense?
I'm not sure I can follow you.
Well, it, what, is this development already been approved and we're just looking at a modification?
No.
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 So when they came before, it's mostly to offer suggestions, parking?
Kind of test the water.
Yeah, okay.
We'll talk about some potential changes here in just a minute to the R four zone. And staff and the applicant have acted on, you know, I don't want to box you guys into a corner at all, but what we felt were some fairly positive responses to some ideas, the changes that we can make to some zoning provisions. But no, no, this, this is step one. And, uh, you know, like maybe complimenting Springville, we don't like to compliment developers very often, but these folks, they, uh, they've stuck with it for quite a while. They provided iteration after iteration of project designs, uh, which isn't necessarily uncommon, but previous to them, we've worked with a handful of other developers that, that weren't willing to stick with it, weren't willing to really, I think, put a, a design together that, that does accomplish the, you know, main intent of the R four zone, so.
Okay.
Uh, that's really been helpful. Relative to the specific layout, this is what we're talking about. So State Road fifty-one here. I would guess probably something like a convenience store right here in the corner. Then primarily professional office uses to the north. These buildings here we'll look at in just a second. But about fifty feet in height, four stories. Altogether, three hundred and thirty-six homes in the development. These would be apartments, so this would not be subdivided. But rather would be kept in, in one ownership. Centralized management, different things like that. I'll let the applicant speak to the amenities if we need to, and some of those things in just a minute. But, you know, per the provisions that we have in place, all of the buildings have to have furniture on a public street. So the route that we see here would be dedicated public streets. I really like, again, outward in Springville, tree-lined streets. That really becomes the pedestrian way to get around the neighborhood. Think about balconies and different things like that. Looking down on the streets definitely contributes to having. definitely contributes to having more of a neighborhood kind of a feeling than apartment projects where, from the time you enter the project to the time that you leave, you're just in a big parking lot. And it really, that arrangement of the public street, that has been the biggest challenge for further applicants to work with. I'm gonna catch the chase on a couple of other details and then turn things over to the applicant. Mike, if you can scroll all the way down to the text amendments that we have at the end of this presentation.
Yes, sir.
Or Brandon. To the R41. So just to touch on these things. So this is how I'm going to characterize things. You might see it differently, but I would call these maybe more tune-ups than insignificant changes. Nothing on this page. This is just a text of a residential four zone, and some changes that would be needed to accommodate the specific design that is proposed tonight. First of all, depending on how much of their project ultimately is wetlands, they'll be either at 18 point something units per acre or 19 point something units per acre. A delineation's been done that suggests that it's gonna be in the 18 point something units per acre range, which is a factor of we won't let developers count land that's sensitive lands, wetlands or the like, for purposes of getting density in the development. So that's how the equation is impacted. For myself, 18, I think that is a great starting point. I think that was a good number to arrive at when we developed these provisions here several years ago, but at the same time, it was somewhat arbitrary. It was our best guess of what it would take to make the project work. And from that perspective, the adjustment potentially going from 18 to 20 is something that I'm comfortable with. One of the things that really stood out, I believe, as we looked at other developments in Utah County, it seemed that developments that had garages for their residents, I can think of one in particular that we looked at in Orem on 8th North, not far from the hospital there, that was built in the early 90s, maybe even late 80s. Great example, by way of a project that had some age, where we could see how well it had aged, and it still looked great, I would say, in every respect. And you could tell that it had attracted a certain type of tenant to the project, and it had garages, and we saw that repeatedly, I think, as we looked at other projects where at least if a tenant had the opportunity to have a garage, that seemed to be a highly appreciated amenity for some, at least of those residents. The project that we used as a model from Springville, they have 0.8 garages per unit, or 80% of the units could have access to a garage. The applicants are proposing that we change that from 0.8 to 0.6. This is probably a change that I'm less enamored with than going up to 20, but at the same time, I don't necessarily think the design suffers by having a structure here. So it's something certainly that I'm comfortable with. Another thing that we've gone around in circles about is the total amount of parking that's required. And without a doubt, projects in Spanish Fork park more heavily than in projects in other communities. We could talk about why that might be, and all better guesses would probably be spot on regardless. People have more cars in Spanish Fork than they do in other communities in Utah County. So for example, in Provo, where 1.5 parking spaces seems to work fairly well for most apartment-type developments like what we're talking about now, we have developments that might be like this, that have 2.5 spaces, and at times at least it seems like they have a parking deficiency. So we require projects to have 2.5 parking spaces, period. The applicants have talked about having that number reduced, and we, as staff, have said, that is something that we feel is a non-starver, and I appreciate that they've taken that to heart. Nonetheless, their project is a little bit unique, and I think it does afford some consideration given that they have access to parking in the office part of the project that's immediately to the north. That is to say that during the hours when the parking, where the office development would largely go unused, which is when typically you have the greatest need for parking and adjacent residential development, you could benefit from having some complementary cross-parking arrangements and that type of a thing, which is where this language comes into play, to where potentially you could count up to a certain amount of parking spaces on an adjacent site towards your required parking. That's something that the Development Review Committee's been more than a few meetings discussing, should have talked about that with the applicant. It seems like a dozen different times now. It sounds like I'm speaking out of both sides of my mouth, but inasmuch as we want to make sure that there's adequate parking, we also don't necessarily want to see asphalt that isn't needed. See, the idea that potentially there is a safety valve and some overflow adjacent to this site, and the idea that that might work well for other projects that might have that similar kind of land use relationship, I think our thought as staff is that if they're able and willing to provide some type of perpetual parking agreement, easement, that type of a thing to ensure, that whether projects change ownership or anything like that, those parking spaces are always available for the use of that residential neighbor, and provided that projects are built to where people that might park on an adjacent site can safely get to and from that parking space and their homes. We don't see a downside to it, in fact, it potentially, I think, is a very, very good model. So the language that we have there included as well, parking on that issue, is really intended to clarify how that could work and what some specifics would be. The other thing that we're talking about is going up from 45 feet, I think it is, to allowing buildings to be 50 feet in height. Again, when we put the 45-foot rule in place, that was really our best guess at the time as to what would work and what would function, and I really appreciate it. We had an architect, the chairman of the planning commission at the time, Bruce Fallon, provided some great insight, but he provides some great insight, particularly on the building height. One thing that going higher with the maximum allowable height does, is it does give an applicant an opportunity to design buildings with a little bit different roof pitch, potentially making them better looking. No guarantee, more of a style thing than anything else, but I think any developer could make things work if they wanted to with a 45-foot height. You'd simply see a lot lower roof pitches and things like that, probably less variety, maybe something that's a little less interesting from that perspective. So that being said, I'll turn things over to the applicant, but just to be clear, the Development Review Committee's reviewed both the proposed preliminary plat and the proposed zone change to R4. We're comfortable recommending that those both be approved. They would have to be approved subject to the city council ultimately approving the proposed text amendments as well, and then maybe another thing or two that we have listed in the staff report.
Text amendments don't have anything to do with this, though? That's gonna be done at the next?
I think that's probably the easiest way to handle this thing, yeah, but just put that out there.
You're just making a point that it has to do with this project.
Right, and ultimately if the state council chooses to not approve the text amendments, then these folks are not going to change the plans before. Thanks.
Okay, developer.
All right, good to be with you. So with Dave earlier talked about a big week for Spanish Fork and the Lowe's opening, I've been really looking forward to Moe Metta's opening on Friday. I don't know if you guys know, it opens on Friday. So I actually just live up the road from this development in Spanish Fork, just on the Spanish Fork side of the train tracks.
Okay.
Fieldstone Development.
Yeah.
My family's been here for a couple of years, and the civil engineer, Marvin, he's also just by me from out, he's also in Spanish Fork. So we're very interested in the outcome and the long-term outcome of this project.
Could you introduce yourself and?
Joseph Ernest. And is my clicker?
Here you go.
Actually, I'm gonna need the clicker.
No.
That. So I want to first thank the staff. Like Dave said, we've actually been at this for quite a while. Brandon, Dave, Kim, I've seen them a lot, and then they're great to work with, so you have top-notch staff, in my opinion. We actually do quite a few developments in other cities, so it's kind of nice for us to be at home. I don't know what we call ourselves yet, as Spanish Fork citizens, so if you have a consensus, if we're Spanish Forkers, Spanish Fork minions, or the Dawns, just let me know by the end, because I'm still wanting to know. So this is our site plan. We've gone the rounds on the site plan, and we're very proud of this site plan. The idea for the community, just so you're aware, we feel like we've come to you with an extremely high-end product type for multifamily residential dwelling units. In fact, I'm gonna kind of walk you through this, and I'm gonna do it pretty quickly. You're familiar with this type of thing, so I'll be quick about it. But what I hope you realize and agree with me on, that we have created a one-stop residential Mecca of a great place to live for the residents. In fact, this, the elevations in the buildings and the aesthetics of it all, even some of the amenities, are patterned after the exact same buildings that the owner, the development owner participates in at Traverse Mountain. So I'll show you these, and those rents for the three bedrooms, just so you're aware, are 1,900 to 2,100. We project a little bit less, but these will be high rental prices, which gives you an indication of just kind of who's gonna be drawn to this area. Also, as well, if you're familiar with the location, I know you guys did your site tour, I would submit to you that this is the best possible place in Spanish Fork for this type of project, and if it's not gonna work here, it just isn't ever gonna work. You have high density to the east with the condominiums, you have the commercial to the north, you have auto uses to the south, and then you have Lowe's to the west, and you have the hospital being built to the northwest, and you have this main artery to the freeway. So it's prime, I think it's fantastic, and I think the residents are gonna love that, love the location, and especially the proximity to retail, which, so they're gonna have all these amenities and they're gonna have the proximity to retail thing, I think it's gonna be a wonderful project. So walking you through this site plan, so we have the public right away coming through, and putting the buildings on the frontage was difficult, but the idea here, like you said, is to keep it open like Outlook. I'm gonna speak to Outlook and parking just for a second, because that's a really big, that's a big issue. Outlook has 260 units and 527 parking spaces. They have two parking spaces per unit, and we have 2.5 per unit. Now, they also, for their approval, they have, the city had required a 2.25 parking spaces per unit. For their approval, they counted their on-street parking to meet their approval. So our 2.5 does not include on-street parking. We are not counting it. Even though they have the right, they'll have the right to park on the street, we have not counted it. In addition, there's been a consensus among the Spanish Fork staff that Outlook has robust parking. In fact, rarely is the on-street parking even close to maximum. Not, is never even close to maximum on-street, and they're at 2.25. So we're at 2.5. We feel like we have more than enough parking. In fact, if you counted the on-street parking, we're at 2.86 parking spaces per unit. And we're actually, I'll show you an exhibit, but we're gonna actually red-curb the turning radiuses. And even red-curving the turning radiuses, we're at 2.86. So we've solved the issue, in my opinion, like more than solved the issue and had to pay for it, right? So we have to pay for that, and that's fine.
Are you counting garages in your parking?
Say it again.
Garages are they counting in your parking spaces?
Yes, garages are counted. Each, let me talk to the speaker. Each building has 12 garages on the first floor. Half of the first floor is 12 garages, in-building garages, okay? And then as we walk through the site plan, if it's an enclosed rectangle, those are garages. Those are structured garages. And then these are parking stalls. So they have more garages, parking stalls. And we'll just take you on the State Road entrance. Right here, we're gonna have a burn and landscaping separation into the development, and down here, we have our clubhouse and pool. This is all phase one, and this is all phase one. So the clubhouse and pool is gonna be surrounded by a four-foot wrought iron fence that'll come all the way around, and the idea here is to keep the kids in, keep it safer over here. Then we have the pavilion and barbecue playground, another pavilion, walking you through here, another pavilion, another pavilion, another playground. Coming over here, we have a massive pavilion barbecue, massive playground, massive splash pad, basketball and pickleball, and then a soccer field. And this will also be manicured, sawed, grassed, and then, and so the code, your code requires on a project like this with 336 units, eight amenities. We have 13. So again, we're trying to go above and beyond and making it just an awesome place to live for the future residents. That's all I want to say about that. I'm gonna move on. So I've shown you the zoning, we're familiar with the surrounding zoning, I'm not gonna belay this point, I think we'd agree on that. This is your general plan, that's the city's map general plan, that's, the red star is our location. As you come in, it's designated mixed use, which this is absolutely appropriate and complies with your general plan, which is really important, especially when you're considering a zone change, it makes it an easier decision. Continuing on, this is the exhibit with the on-street parking, and then we're red-curbing, 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 red-curbing. This is more illustrative.
That's a roundabout, right?
Yeah, that's a roundabout. We like roundabouts at Spanish Fork. I like the new one on 400 North for what it's worth.
That's nice.
Because it decreased my commute time. Every day I come down 400 North and to American Leadership Academy to take my kids to school, and I'm telling you, it's a good job. And good job getting Moe Metta's. That, I'm excited. So, okay, so this is illustrative, and we're not counting it, but if you're being pragmatic and realistic about it, people are gonna park on the street because it's extremely convenient, and we just have an amazing amount of parking. Phasing plan, go back, although you've seen that. I tried to, okay. Now I'm gonna go forward, that's the phasing plan, if you had questions, no problem, but you went back too far. I'm controlling. Brandon, you got this. I got this. Oh, okay, I'll get it for you. I'll get it for you, you just wait. Mayor, mayor, could you get that? That's, this is our subdivision plat, dedicated to public right of way, I'm clicking. Elevations, these are, again, we're patterning them after Traverse Mountain. We are going for the highest-end product we can. This is, we think it's gonna set the precedent for future projects in the city of Spanish Fork. I'm gonna show you actual images, that's actual images of the elevation, the four-story side. We're using brick, we're using brick, stone, various materials to basically just make it aesthetically pleasing. And then also the roof pitches are varied, and we think it's beautiful. This is the garage side, although ours is gonna be four stories, but this is the garage side, gives you an idea of what it'll look like. And then these are the caps, the end caps.
I like the tone on that last picture.
Thank you. Floor plans, single-car garage elevations, and there's some doubled as well, but these are, those garage structures, when you see those enclosed rectangles, this is what it looks like, right here. Then a list of our amenities. Amenities will be similar, but not necessarily the same as shown on the sheet, although I, we may or may not have a BYU logo in the basketball court. I just think, we may, we may not, I'm not saying we won't, but I'm not saying we will,
Well, tell us if you are or if you're not, because I'm a haggy. That's definitely a noble.
So clubhouse elevation, those scrolling through here, but you'll see, we're gonna have amazing amenities on site. Examples of the pavilions and the playgrounds. By the way, the playground, the Fieldstone Home Development, that just went in, it's awesome. My kids love it. Splash pad, oh, there's a rendering of the corner with that wrought iron fence in the clubhouse. I think it'll look really good. Any ideas?
That's off the, that's off the highway.
Yeah, that's off the highway. And Commissioner, the idea is to keep it an open look, right? So we're not using masonry walls or anything like that, we're specifically staying away from that. So it looks inviting. It's not a compound, that's the public right-of-way and the buildings on the front edge, it creates a non-compound feel, so we're continuing that theme. And then, it's really important to us that, from the commercial strip, where we have two-hundred-and-forty parking spaces per, the recorded CCNRs, that we're creating pedestrian-friendly walkways. In fact, we have six, which is probably more than we need, but we have six. And we're, again, we're gonna keep it really, really friendly for the pedestrians, and we're gonna dwell there. And this is actually the same in that post in my neighborhood in Fieldstone.
How many is off-site?
Two-hundred and forty.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's, that's the thirty percent?
That is, two-hundred and forty becomes, it's actually less than. Less than that. Yeah, it's less than that. Dave just crafted the word. So, for the text amendment language, Dave was really nice to me, frankly. If I was the applicant on the text amendment language, I would've asked for way more changes. In fact, I came with a list of about twelve changes to the text amendment. But Dave, you know, slapped me around, hit me, hit me a few times. I was nice about it. And we narrowed it down, he narrowed it down to just three that he thought were a good idea. And I'm good with that. And so the city's kinda the applicant behind that. I know Dave has told me before that other developers who have seen your R4 code just run, they just leave, they're not gonna go for it. But we've worked a lot, and we think it works. And I will tell you, though, that R4 code, the way it currently is written with the eighteen, with the eighteen cap, with the requirement to have buildings on the front edge, and the parking requirements, and the garage requirements, and the amenity requirements, when you pass that to a civil engineer, it's very, very difficult to make that work and to make it pencil. So I wholeheartedly support the changes. In fact, I don't think, I don't think the way it's currently written is doable most of the time. In fact, we're in a unique situation, where we have this off-site parking that's basically on-site, because it connects and affects our project. I think other developers, even with the changes that are proposed, are not gonna be so fortunate. Just for it. So, and then going through here, again, here's the landscaping plan. Again, we're have a ton of landscape, it's gonna be phenomenal, phenomenal, it's gonna be walkable, the residents are gonna love it, they're all gonna be friends, they're gonna sing kumbaya, it's gonna be the best thing ever. And they're gonna eat at Mobeta's. And because they eat at Mobeta's and eat at the other restaurants, we're gonna bring even more restaurants.
There you go.
And that's gonna be fantastic for me and my waistline, because I live right at the road.
Do you have a financial stake in...
No, I don't.
Okay.
But I'd like one, because they're phenomenal. In fact, I have a meeting with the city of Augn tomorrow, and for sure, I'm eating at the Mobeta's in Augn, for effect. And then Friday, Friday for lunch, I will be at the Mobeta's.
What time?
Here in Spanish Fork. Lunchtime.
All right.
I'm available for questions. Or if you just wanna get the motion. I would say, we're very, we're comfortable, I've reviewed the conditions of approval, we're comfortable with the conditions of approval.
Kind of interesting to me that you, in your first phase, you're going with this many amenities, and there's some expensive amenities on this end.
Yeah.
And is that just to get the curb appeal from the highway?
That's, that's important, to get the curb appeal. It's also important, we believe the clubhouse will be a fantastic sales office.
So you'll have your sales office in there, and that's a great place to start.
And those initial residents will get to benefit from the pool and those other amenities, they'll be important.
Your off-site parking, your cross-parking agreements would be, where is that? That's to the north?
Yeah, right here. It starts right here. Starts here, comes over here. Joining Ford.
And when will that go in?
As they develop. So this one's already developed, and we have the rights to park here.
So, as we're going through these phases, does your parking stay within compliance of the two-point-five for the whole...
All the time.
For all phases?
Uh-huh, yep. That's a really good question, but I actually have notes to say that, but I didn't say.
Phase one, that's all the progress, if you notice.
Is that why I say all?
So if the other applicant had just presented something like this, showing the road from the get-go...
Would've been home by now.
Exactly.
I like it.
I love it, too. The only, and it doesn't pertain too much to this, because it's a text amendment, but the only thing I got a concern with is the garages, going from eighty to sixty. Wonder about splitting difference, seventy. We can hammer that.
Who's parking? It just takes up, it takes up more space.
I would rather, I'd rather go skinnier on the parking.
Commissioner Tanner, here's where I go.
Chairman.
Chairman Tanner. You go address him as Doctor from...
He'll love it.
I predict, I predict that a lot of these garages will be used as storage space, if we do that, the more we have. And we have, let me just give you an example here. We have fifty-six three-bedrooms, and we have a hundred-and-sixty and two bedrooms, and we have a hundred-and-twelve one-bedrooms, one bed. And when you think about the ratios, and you think about sixty percent of garages, I still think we'll have garages that are storage units, with the way it is now. And I just think we're welcoming, welcoming even more, because we can't increase, even if you say eighty percent, even if you said ninety percent, we can't do anything else to increase the number of garages in the building. There's gonna be twelve, twelve is twelve is twelve. All it will mean is more exterior garages, and I just, I don't think they're needed.
Look like a storage unit.
Yeah, I don't think they're needed, I don't think they'll look better. I think they'll end up being storage.
Do they, I guess they would typically pay extra for those garages, wouldn't they?
Yeah.
All of them, whether it's in the basement, the first level, or...
Yeah, they should have them.
Dave, do you remember, I don't expect you to, but what the percentage was at the Reese Cool Apartments? Was it...
Which apartments?
The ones on Fourth North.
You know what? There's one per unit.
There's eighteen minutes there, isn't there?
We can check that.
Of course, that doesn't have anything to do with this project, per se, either, does it?
It's maybe not a terrible guy to use.
Unless it is, unless it's not payable at the moment. Then it would be terrible, yeah.
I mean, to your, to your point about, you know, having a desired place, and I think this is hitting all of them spots, but I think garages are one of those things that make it payable. The, this place on Eighth North and Orem that Dave was talking about is the Courtland Apartments, and it's been there, I don't know, thirty, almost thirty years, and it's gorgeous. In fact, it's got some stonework that I really liked about yours, it, your stonework above the...
Fifty. Is it fifty?
Hmm. Can't win that one.
Well, I would say...
You just need a different example, right?
Give me another example.
A lot of the adjacencies have a less demanding parking requirement, especially, almost all of them.
So what would be Outlook, do you think?
Outlook is two-point-two-five.
About garages?
Garages...
It's eighty. That's where, that's where we got it from.
Are you sure? Because I actually have Brandon Stafford board for the Outlook... Two thousand and thirteen, November seventh, two thousand and thirteen. Hold on. Friday.
Push back.
Friday.
What?
Just push back.
Friday.
I think it's on page seven.
Is it page seven? You did this in two thousand and three. I'll have to find it.
Or not.
I know.
We're okay.
It's nine o'clock.
Sixty, sixty percent of the time, Dave makes up statistics, so...
Oh, that's for sure. He got that right.
Oh, it's too blurry. I'm sorry, I came to be an answer. I had it electronically, I could... Well, no, it's here, it's right here, but my print version is too blurry, but it's right there. If you could pull it up electronically, you have it, the number of garages.
Well, I appreciate your opinion. Looks like a nice project. See, this is a public hearing, right?
Public hearing.
Yeah. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and go into public hearing on this, if we got anybody, audience would like to speak on it.
Seeing none.
Seeing none. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, how do you feel about the project?
I think it's time that we have one of these, it's pretty neat.
Really neat.
I like that the first one that we're going to have is one that is putting a lot of amenities in it, it's a good design. And, you know, I have a granddaughter and a couple of people who live in the apartments that are on the north end of Main Street, where some of these issues exist down there, specifically garages. One of the people that I know that lives down there pays for a garage, my granddaughter, because they've only been married a short time, Mary don't have the disposable income, they do without the garage, and they park out in the parking lot. And so, it's kind of interesting, too, that you would think that my granddaughter would enjoy the amenities, spend time in the pool and stuff like that. Nah, they do other things, probably play games on the computer. You know, it seems to be the kind of middle generation that spends the time in the, in the pool. Anyway, you know, I think that this is quite a step above those, and I like the design, and I think that it is a great place for this. I don't, don't know if there's a better place in Spanish Fork, or...
So Joseph, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, how much is range, again?
So, our projected range for the three-bedroom is anywhere from fifteen-hundred to seventeen-hundred. The two-bedroom, we're projecting twelve-hundred to thirteen-hundred, and the one-bedroom, nine-hundred to a thousand.
Okay. That's a pretty range.
So amenities in the apartments, what kind of, what kind of, in the floor plan, it doesn't, you know...
Finishes, what type of finishes?
We haven't, I haven't gone into a detail on what finishes we'll provide yet. I'm, I'm sure we'll provide a wide array of finishes and options like that, but it's fairly preliminary for us right now, so we haven't gotten the project approved yet, so we're, we haven't gone there.
How soon would you start?
Immediately. We would break ground as quickly as we had the right to do so, on phase one.
You're good.
Well, Richard, you've not made a motion tonight. You've made a lot of commotion.
That's my life. I've made a lot of recommendations through my life. I'll make a recommendation that we approve the Ridgeline Parkway community zone change and preliminary plot approval with the following findings and conditions.
Great motion. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
That sound okay to you?
It does. Now I'm shaking for the text amendment garage issue. I'm waiting to see.
I do have one question that I just thought of as I looked at this, as we were just finishing.
God, you just don't want to go over there.
Do they have a bus stop on that road? One thing that was here was access to transportation. I don't, does anybody know, is there a bus route that comes up that road now?
They should. They need one. They'll need one, but it's not...
And it's not just because of the apartments. Kind of a sensitive issue that you're touching on.
Oh.
You're gonna get this...
Oh, we're digging up the group.
All right, I didn't say that.
UTA needs to provide better service to Spanish Fork than they're doing now.
Amen.
And this project with Gannon Creek, with the hospital, all of that, in my mind, warrants a different routing system. There is a route that comes down State Route, excuse me, State Route fifty-one now, but it needs to be routed differently. I think things like this probably justify a higher frequency of service and different things like that, so we do talk to UTA about that. I do suspect that they will make changes, but the fact that this project is that, is really at the intersection essentially that it's at, makes it pretty easy for that, that site to be reached, so...
What drives those changes with?
I think there's some science to it, but also it's a lot of lobbying, really. Anything that we can do, and I'll say this, too, I appreciate, I think, where UTA comes from, which is that they want to provide routes that get used, so helping them understand that if you provide the route, the ridership's gonna be there. I think that's a really important thing that we have to do, but we certainly have some very, very significant trip generators that will be in place in two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, that weren't there a couple of years ago. And I'll say this as well, the contribution that Spanish Fork makes to UTA because of the increased sales tax that's been generated in the community, so what UTA's getting from Spanish Fork is dramatically different than what they were getting just a few years ago, but yet the service is identical. And even though we've doubled in population, in essence, in, I would say, the last fifteen to twenty years, the service is the same as it was fifteen years ago, so that's kinda how some of the conversations that we have with them go. They're, they do their best, I think, to be accommodating, but still, we're underserved, and that's a great, great issue to touch on, I think.
All right, last item on the agenda. Brandon, you usually do Title XV stuff. You gonna leave it up to Dave?
Since he's sitting down, I feel strongly about garages.
Uh-oh, Joe.
This was his recommendation. He says I'm the applicant, I'm not. You can't say no to the city, big's the big one. No particular order to these. This is language that the city attorney provided to define when rules go into effect, in essence. So the concept is that once a proposed, for example, amendment to the zoning code gets discussed in a noticed public meeting, in this case, it's the Development Review Committee meeting, at that point in time, that rule can be enforced by the city. This is a doctrine that most cities follow, but our city attorney was recently advised that rather than to just follow it as a fairly widely accepted legal land use doctrine, we put explicit language in the zoning code to make it clear about exactly what that is, and the duration becomes important as well. So, any questions about that? I would maybe chalk that up as a technicality kind of a thing, but yet, one that becomes very useful and important.
Dave Church make that one up?
I'm not sure. It wouldn't be, I wouldn't be surprised in the least if that came from him. Travel center. We've been talking about the commercial development on US Highway six, and as a part of one of the conversations that we had about the Holiday Oil site there, somebody mentioned something about a truck stop, and I simply got worried that maybe as a community, we're a little bit exposed, because we haven't defined what a truck stop is, and because we haven't defined it, we haven't clearly said where they can or cannot go in the community. So, this revision would first of all define what a travel center is, AKA truck stop, and then notes that a travel center could only be located on property that's zoned industrially. And there are some proposed proximity provisions relative to Interstate Fifteen that are included next page, I think. Right there. So, minimum parcel size. Incidentally, the two truck stops in Springville both are, I wanna say, like, nine and eleven acres or something like that. We've got some feedback that they're too small to probably work the right way, and just that, basically twenty-five hundred square feet, or twenty-five hundred feet, linear feet, that's about a half of a mile. This revision is not necessarily intended to be inviting or accommodating of travel centers, but yet to just clearly say, this is where you can or can't go. This eliminates the places that I think would be particularly problematic for us to accommodate a truck stop and everything that comes with that.
So do they, do they have to meet all of these things to be called a travel center? For example, that first sentence, a facility engaged in the sale of fuel, accessories or equipment, over-the-road trucks and similar commercial vehicles. There's gas stations in town that sell that now, over-the-road fuel. So is that, and then it says the travel center may also include, so it could. Does the definition of selling over-the-road fuel make that a travel center?
I would say it does not in and of itself.
Yeah.
So I think it would take more than that to qualify.
But the big one would be the twenty-five hundred feet from the highway.
By way of where it could go, but what it is.
Gas station, what we call a gas station would fit that first sentence that are well beyond that point.
Right. But it also, we define convenience stores. And I think probably, I'm trying to think of a, of a fuel center or convenience store that we have in town that would better match this definition than how we have those things defined in the code, and I can't think of one. But.
Maybe forty acres.
Well, and that's really intended.
Overnight accommodations has been wanted, nobody would.
I mean, is that first sentence, maybe this needs to be reworded?
Scroll it down.
A travel center may also, it is this, but then it also could be. These other things that could hitch most of other people onto.
Would it, would it read better if it said, that second sentence, a travel center, or maybe it's travel centers typically also include, or something like that?
So the fact that there's convenience stores in town that sell over-the-road fuel, that doesn't matter here in this comparison, right?
I don't think it does. But.
I, most gas stations, I think, in town only sell car fuel. But like the one on seven hundred north, Sinclair, that specifically sells over-the-road fuel and it gets big truck. So I think it's actually kind of unique that it sells over-the-road fuel. I don't know that it has anything to do, I just wanted to make that point and maybe.
I certainly appreciate where you're coming from, and incidentally, that definition, this is a conglomeration of six or seven. Other best definitions that I found in about forty-five minutes of surfing the web. Not candor.
Be talking based.
Absolutely. Made a few tweaks, but to maybe your concern, for me, it's a matter of, hey, this site's big and it's designed to accommodate big truck movements and that type of thing, and that's its primary purpose. I think we absolutely could beat that, this definition with more specificity along those lines, and I think it'd be better. So if you're comfortable with us taking, you know, maybe a whack at that and just from that perspective, making it more clear, I think that's a great thing to do. We've already talked about the R four changes, I'll leave the garages up to you, of course. This is something that we discussed with the city council relative to the site on US Highway six. I could describe this a lot of different ways. Certainly, one thing that I see as being very beneficial with the proposed changes that we're suggesting be made here to our neighbor one, excuse me, our commercial one zone. We also would call it our neighborhood commercial zone, is that it, I think, makes it a lot easier to employ on a lot of sites in the community than it has been in the past. There are two properties that I know of, and I don't think there are others, that in the past have been zoned, neighborhood, commercial. One is still zoned that way, near the mouth of the canyon. The other one, you might remember, we changed the zoning on, a site on, excuse me, on Canyon Road a few years ago. That's where the townhomes were built. There, I wanna say like fourteen hundred east, maybe, and Canyon Road. Once again.
Kim, you're on your game.
Sure is. The zone hasn't been deployed, I think, largely because of the hours of operational restriction that we've had in the past. We've talked with people about using it a few times, the time that I've been here, and that's been a struggle for folks to accept and to make work just for whatever reason on their end. So instead of zoning properties commercial one, they've been zoning commercial two. Even though there are sites like maybe the seven eleven on Main Street, which for a lot of different reasons, you know, adjacent C to single-family homes, residential uses immediately next door and things like that, it's probably very well suited for a zoning district that has some of the other provisions that were built into the C one zone previously that I think still probably warrants some additional retention and deepening up, size of building, size of business, different things like that, to make sure that those operations, particularly from, I think, an aesthetic, like bulk mass, how big buildings are, different things like that, how well they fit into a surrounding neighborhood. So again, a site like the seven eleven site, not a candidate for this zone because of hours of operation limit. Aside from what we're seeing there on that screen, I think we might have had another couple of changes. We did relative to conditional uses, if I remember right. There are some things that genuinely are more obnoxious for neighbors than other things. Drive-throughs have the tendency to create a little disharmony, depending on how they're oriented, where the squawk boxes, you know, the ordering devices and different things like that. So making those conditional uses to provide for some additional oversight is a part of the approval process. We staff think make good sense on those, but that's really all there is to that. The Development Review Committee's reviewed these proposed changes, including that one there. We've recommended that they be approved, and this is a public hearing with the text amendments.
Questions from the commissioners on the text amendments? Feel comfortable with all of them? Good? Okay.
Public hearing.
Public hearing? Thanks, Dave. Okay, we'll go into public hearing if anybody's got any comments about these text amendment changes. You gotta introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Rachel Heath. The C one is kind of my baby, 'cause I live right by where the Holiday Oil is going in. That was the compromise that we struck between the landowners wanting to sell and our neighborhood, a few blocks to the north of there, not having C two in our backyards or fairly close to them. So that's, yeah, I dug deep into the, found this little-known, little-used C one zoning. The only thing, and so Dave sent me the thing a couple of weeks ago, right before the city council meeting and whatnot. He, so the only thing I and my neighbors have concern with is completely removing all of the, what is it called? Hours of operation restrictions? 'Cause I feel like that's one of the defining characteristics that makes it different from commercial two, which is general, commercial, anything goes. The other, so for several reasons. One, the Holiday Oil guy was very forthcoming and saying in their sixty-some-odd-year history, they've never opened, been open twenty-four hours a day, and so they don't intend to do that. They have restricted hours between five AM and midnight in, or a tighter range than that in every single Holiday Oil they own, you know, like in the company-wide. So I don't really feel like, if you want to expand it to include five AM to midnight, I would be amenable to that because it's still, what's the old adage, nothing good happens after midnight? And with the high school just up the street, I see that as being a big draw to, or it opens up the potential, 'cause it's totally undeveloped land that has just been rezoned C one, right by our houses, that it opens up the potential to any business coming in and wanting to have, even if just a twenty-four-hour drive-through. And those teenagers right up the road get out of the late dance or, and they hang out until three o'clock in the morning, that, you know, it's not very conducive to our, what we want in our area. They already, on a regular basis, race through our neighborhood going fifty to sixty miles an hour in a twenty-five zone. And the police are well aware of that and have set speed traps for them. I don't know if they've caught any yet, but I feel like this would just add another layer of opening up the can of worms that, and you don't have that defining distinguishing characteristic that separates C one from C two. Again, I mean, this is Spanish Fork, you drive down Main Street past eleven o'clock on any given night and the, you know, the rugs are rolled up, everything's shut down, but in the future, that might not be the case. And, you know, if they, if a business really wants to be open twenty-four-seven, like the seven eleven typically, those are, then they can go across the highway to where there's thirty or forty, fifty acres already zoned C two. But if you, if you, yeah, so I feel like it's gutting it, but I think we agree with, with everything else amended, you know, the conditional use, drive-through, all of that, but that's my biggest concern. I had a lot of neighbors who were concerned about it and only my other, my neighbor, my other neighbor, Rachel, was able to be here tonight on short notice and, yeah, holidays and kids' schedules and whatnot and sickness.
So Rachel, do you, you like the C one versus C two?
Yes.
And what didn't you like about C two?
That it just, anything can move in, there's no restrictions on what can be built, it's general, commercial, you know.
Was there particular businesses that?
Not necessarily, but just, well, like big box stores in particular, that was something that was very, we don't want loady docks in our backyards. And, you know, having to, it's already, just changing the corner is always gonna create a ripple effect going northward towards our subdivision, you know, and would affect the potential for the estate lots that would be built in the future, 'cause that's what, the way it's already zoned, but, yeah, I think the hours of operation is the only thing I take issue with. And if you want to not strike them completely, but still have some guidelines, I, our neighbors would be agreeable to.
I have one question for you. I, I wasn't here for that city council meeting, but I watched it on TV later. And I may have dozed off a time or two, but I think I.
Yeah, it was pretty long.
But I feel a little bit like we're taking two steps forward and sliding one back. It was my understanding by watching that, that what is being done tonight was what you had agreed to.
Well, the C one.
With the city council.
Yeah.
And we, and I listened and I am well aware that they've discussed this exact issue of the, whether there would be the ability to have the all-night operation. And it was my understanding that you guys had agreed to that, and that's where the compromise came.
Well, that was, yeah, I didn't get up and speak again.
Well, wait.
Yeah.
I want another bite at the apple.
To address that, I didn't get up and speak again at that city council meeting because that was after the public hearing had already closed and it was the discussions and everything. That, and we were only given three minutes, and I think I took more like three, four or five, but, yeah. That was one of the main things that.
Well, and I asked that question because in that meeting, in the way that the council voted, it was my understanding from what I saw on TV.
Yeah.
That was what was agreeable to all the parties involved. And I don't feel comfortable in changing what they had agreed upon.
Well, they, my understanding was, from being there, was to, that they were going to address the verbiage in this setting and put it back through again. So it was more details that needed to be hashed out and, I don't know.
Dave, that's exactly what was happening right here. That's what was, that was the verbiage.
Yes, the verbiage, yes. So that's why I'm coming back again.
So now you're, you're wanting us to add a little bit more to them.
I don't feel good about that without having the city council here to defend what they did.
So we as a commission, we approved it or recommended it to go through as a C two.
That's right.
Twenty-four hours.
And they made the change to the C one.
And then they made the change to C one.
With the conditions of this, if I'm, unless I'm, if I am speaking wrong, let me know, but that was my understanding.
You're talking right.
Yeah, you know, and I thought that that was what was agreed upon, and I was not here and I didn't hear the discussion between after or whatever.
It was a C one that went through with the.
With that?
With, yeah.
With that?
Well, they said that it would be reviewed and changed.
My understanding is I watched it, it was with this verbiage that it, that there would be, that this would be removed. And that's, so that's why I'm asking, did I miss something? Did, was it, am I misrepresenting what happened that night? Someone, I wasn't there.
Yeah, I, the council changed the zoning to C one, this is my.
Yeah, because we got upset, we were concerned about the time change. And they said, okay, well, we'll address that, the time, in another, in the next council meeting.
And they would. I, and I guess that's maybe where my perspective's a little bit different, is relative to this particular issue. But they couldn't act on these changes.
Because they weren't in the. They hadn't gone through you guys.
And we had prepared this as a draft with the idea that potentially it could change. The fact that it didn't change, I'm almost surprised that we didn't, you know, come up with some additional tweaks that we thought made sense. We haven't done that in the last couple of weeks. I think as staff, we're really comfortable with how this reads now. So it's almost just happenstance that there weren't additional tweaks as this went from just being that draft to.
Yeah, I mean, because the staff was literally put together like the day before the counseling, you know.
Was the spirit of, of the reason to not go with our recommendation from a C two to C one was, was the biggest part of that reason because C two was too open and too allowable for many, many businesses that maybe was fearful? And so the C one fit it?
And that it would set the precedent.
But the problem with the C one.
For everything else.
The problem with the C one is then you can't have a twenty-four-hour convenience store.
Yeah, which Holiday Oil conceded, they didn't have that intention anyway.
So we've got a lot of convenience stores in town currently that are twenty-four, seven, and they're C twos.
Yeah.
Which could be C ones, right?
Well, that's.
Which, because the C twos are twenty-four hours.
I appreciated this concept, I appreciate the concept. Because right now, and I did a poor job of explaining this, but our C one zone, in my view, doesn't work today. That's why it hasn't been used.
Partly because of this hours of operation or almost entirety.
That had so for people that had wanted to even do a bank or something like that. They have wanted the property zoned C two instead of C one. If, for example, you know, that use of the structure that they're investing in ever needs to change or something like that, they, they didn't feel comfortable making that investment with the idea that they'd be somehow limited as to how they could use that in the future, so.
For time of day.
Because of the time of day, exactly, so it has been a significant thing. It's really the only thing that differentiates it from the C two zone. If you're talking about a smaller, some of the other, you know, the type of thing that fits into that initial paragraph there. So I love the idea of making this change to the C ones, to the C one zone. I apologize, I'm obviously struggling with that.
You're all right.
Because I think it, I think there are sites in the community that definitely are going to be beneficiaries from being zoned C1 instead of C2. As if even maybe we might initiate some zoning map improvements to change a site like 7-Eleven or some others to C1. That might make perfect sense. I appreciate the concern that the neighbors have about the hours of operation, and I say this not trying to be persuasive. But I've been in other conversations over the years where there are people that like the idea of things being manned and in operation. For example, late into the night.
So they're monitored.
Hours a day because you have eyeballs. You have somebody there that if there is loitering in a parking lot or something like that, typically it's self-policed much better if, again, there's our employees there, lights on, that type of thing. And I guess maybe it's from that perspective in part that at least the staff were not, were not intimidated or concerned really about that being open, that additional five or six hours a day. In fact, I'd say there might be some benefit. But that's just all of it in my perspective as well, so.
So with this, though, we're being asked to give our comments, this will still go before the council?
Yes, we scheduled the public hearing with them as well, and they would be the body to make-
Because for this specific law, we were obviously okay with it being C2 open. I mean, we thought it was a, my opinion at least was, it was a good use of this land as a C2. So, I mean-
And one of the things that I think is important here is that the residents met with several of the city council.
Two.
And, well, there were others that met as well.
Dave and Seth were there as well.
And so, you know, this whole discussion came up with the city council was a way to try and resolve some of the issues. And, you know, I don't know how you guys felt, but there was a little bit of issue with, you know, we, we presented something to the city council and they changed that. Rather than taking our advice of what we wanted to do, do C2. They had a right. They went to the city council and to the staff and they worked out a, they worked out a deal. And I did hear it, and I heard this specific thing that was discussed, and I've discussed with a couple of the city council members. And I feel like if we were to change what they agreed to after discussing this, we have not talked to you. Nobody called me, nobody called me to get my advice or to get, you know, my feelings on this thing. But I know you did with the city council and with the staff. And what you came up with, you were a part of that, both of you. I saw you there. And, you know, I, I don't feel good about changing what they were, what they said they were going to do, which is to change this, uh, C1 zoning with these, or to have this C1 zoning with these changes. And so, I think that I feel like I want to go ahead and approve the zone change and excuse me, and the changes in the wording of that zone.
As, as we do that, it'll still go before the council.
Yes.
They disagree. As it's their prerogative, they can then change that back if that's not what they-
Exactly.
My instinct.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. But they spoke, and this is what they came up with. I assumed that you guys were on board with that. Now all of a sudden I find out that, you know, you've got some other idea. I'm not comfortable with that, making that decision when it was the city council who talked to you and came up with this. Do you understand that, where I'm coming from?
Well-
I'm not against what you're saying.
I came up with it and Dave ran with it and made these changes. I didn't get the, I got these, he, he made these changes. Yeah, it was like over the weekend, because we met on a Friday with Seth and Dave and
First thing Monday.
Yeah, first, first thing Monday, so we, yeah, so it was kind of on the fly, presenting it to the city council and yeah, like it's, but then they, they also said we're going to kick the verbiage back through to the planning commission and then approve the final verbiage.
This, this, this came from them?
No, this came from Dave.
We generated this in the hope of addressing all the concerns that Bemers had at the time.
Yeah.
Was they concerned about the hours of operation in the city council meeting? Is that why they approved?
Well, I can tell you a concern that I have that hasn't even been addressed. But this, this company that's going to open this, this service station, it'll be an asset to the community, to tell you the truth. And they, uh, they do not operate past the hours that you would like. You know, and so this one is kind of an interesting situation. However,
Yeah.
if Maverick, or, yeah, this is Maverick, right?
It's Holiday Oil.
Holiday Oil. If Holiday Oil decides that they're going to sell to somebody else, and it happens every day, that they get bought out by a multinational company.
And that's exactly-
And they say, we're going to go, we're going to go that way. But, why is it right for us to tell them what their hours should be when right across the road they have a twenty-four-hour situation?
They don't.
That, so now you're, now you're taking that ability away from them to make their
But it's zoned.
Business viable.
Zone C2, yeah.
Yeah, but you're taking their, their ability to make their business viable by changing, you know, by not having the same zone kitty corner across the street. And I understand your, you know, I understand your, your point. And I commend you for having the guts to go and talk to people and get something rolling and get it going. That's what we like to see. What I don't feel comfortable with is, uh, you know, we kind of got cut down basically by the city council. We passed one thing and then they, they changed it. And we went, okay, well, you know, what's going on? I don't know how they're going to feel about this. I don't know how they're going to feel, but I don't feel good about changing. When I did hear that on the city council.
Yeah, because there was a lot of back and forth.
It sounds like it continues, but have we gone out of public hearing?
No.
No, we're still up here. So stay up here. Stay up here.
Is there any other comments?
I, I have a comment. I feel the same way John did. And my name was mentioned while you were talking to the city councilman. You know, saying I was tender-hearted and everything else and the people that, that we are doing this zone change. As a city councilman, I always told people, it didn't matter if my own mother came up. If I didn't think it was right for the city or, I would vote against her. Ten years ago, again, if you remember, and I said this a month ago, these people came up to us, you know, and asked about a zone change and everything, that one day that they were going to build this, you know? And it felt right to all of us as a city council. And we were going to make it C2 back in them days, you know, and we didn't know what was going to come in, but we wanted businesses in there, and you have to make the cushion some way. And this was way before your house was even built.
Oh, yeah.
Way before. And so, you know, my concerns is, as, as planning commissions now, you know, I think it's a great place for a C2 building, you know? And Holiday Oil is going to be closed at a certain time because that's their deal, but just like John says, you know, if another business comes in, then I don't think it's fair for them or somebody across the road that wants to be a C2 and stay open all night long, and then this, then this company comes and says, well, hell, them guys are making a lot more money than we are, so we want to come to the city council and change our zone's change so we can stay up all night long and do that stuff. I think we open up a big can of worms when we change things like that. And I, I called councilmen and I, I, I publicly, I, I told them, I says, I thought you were wrong. I don't think that's fair, that we sit there and made a decision, you know? But I can understand what you're coming through, and so they've talked to you and you've, you've made your, you know, you've made some commitments with them and that. And so here they are again, and so I'm going to honor the city council, but I don't want to do any more changing than what they've already said to us. You know, my bottom line is, I think it should have stayed C2. I really do because, and, and here's the other thing is, if it was, if it was your ground, okay, say for instance it was your ground. And say for instance a business came in and says, hey, listen, we'll give you $200,000 an acre if we can build a C2 area in it, but if we can't, we'll only give you a hundred thousand. What would you do? If you were the landowner, if you were the landowner and, and the city already had it, you know, general planned out for, for that, what would you do? What would your? I mean honestly, I just want you to be honest with me.
Um, I'm not sure what I would do, because I'm not a landowner.
Okay. But anyway, but, but there's, there's some other scenarios here that we, we look at at city council.
But my concern is the potential down the road, how it will impact the surrounding areas.
And as a, and as a, and as a planning commissioner, you know, Dave wanted to move this back even further from that one road, and we stopped that because we didn't think that was right. And so as a planning commissioner, we said, no, let's just work on this section the way it should be, because all of us are going to, are going to ask, well, I think our company's got the right to stay open twenty-four hours a day. 7-Eleven right down there on Main Street is going to be open twenty-four hours a day, and there's residential people all the way around it. You know, and, and Macy's is open twenty-four hours a day except for Sunday, you know, and, and so forth and so on, and and I, I don't think that was fair that we made that, the city council made that decision. But I'm going to honor it, because I was the city councilman once, and you know, and I, and, and I like to talk with residents and, and try to work things out and try to make it work. So you have done that. You have done that, and that's the way the system should work. You know, we should listen to you, you know, on, on your concerns and stuff like that, and so we should honestly listen to what you've got, but we've also got to feel the rights of what's going to be best for the city too. And I think honestly that we should have kept it C2. But now here's these things with the C1 that we're going to try to change, and I think this is where we need to go. That's my feeling, Rachel, honestly.
And Rachel, we did uphold things, uh, not too long ago when there was a proposal to put in a little higher density housing across the road, almost across the road from you. And someone wanted to come in there and change, you know, uh, the city plan. And, you know, we didn't like that at all because it didn't fit what we had done. This happens to fit.
Yeah, that, that's why the C1 is a better compromise than the C2, because it does fit more in line with, you know, acre lots and that's right, like in my backyard, that zone, that, that is a zoned estate lots and
Well, is this a-
Take that away and it's-
Is this a great compromise then of what we're doing here?
Yeah, I, and that's why I came up with this.
Okay, okay.
I just, and I think that's part of the reason what, that drew me to this with the hours of operation restrictions. Because most of the businesses on that list would not operate twenty-four, seven. With the exception of maybe convenience stores, some brands. But my concern is the potential, because it's all undeveloped. We don't know who's going to want to move in. So if you open it up, sorry, I guess my aggression is talking about, if you open it up, then there is no going back.
That, that's part of that protection of not going to a C2 though, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Some of the-
So it, it, because it limits the, the size of the building and, you know, the focus of, and then the list of things, so that, you know, that's why it does work with our, you know, I mean, our houses are not starter homes. They're half million dollar homes. Just a stone's throw away and-
So Dave, how would you write something up, up like that to keep like a convenience store hours or whatever into this?
Could it be a conditional use?
I, I mean, I'm just, I don't know.
Permit type deal?
What do you want to do?
I don't know. I don't know.
So you want to keep the hours of operation, that's easy. You want to change them instead of leaving them, that's easy.
Well, the trouble with leaving, leaving the hours the way it is, you just made the point, there's nothing in town with a C1.
I, I don't see this-
Because you haven't, I feel like this would be a precedent to set for C1 going forward.
I think we're mixing-
Not to go back and change-
Mixing the C1 zoning up with the Holiday Oil lot. I think the C1, to change the C1 zoning to where we don't have any hours, that's one topic. The other topic is, in that specific parcel.
Yeah.
You, it's been, it was approved as C2, council changed to C1. Whatever that compromise was or not, I, I don't know. I don't make a habit of watching the city council, because it puts me right to sleep. The so I mean, if we're doing something specific to that lot, that's one thing, but if we need to change our C1 zoning so it is usable to where it doesn't have the hour restriction, I think there's, we're kind of blending these two issues together.
Yeah, and that very well might be.
And I think you're right. What I'm not comfortable with is that what I understood from watching that city council meeting, this was exactly what they were talking about.
Changing it to a C1, but, but keeping it open operation twenty-four hours.
Folishing the hours.
They only accomplished with-
So why don't we move ahead with what we would think would be good for a C1 zoning? And if the city, if the city council wants to come back and say, no, we want those hour restrictions in there, they can then add that back in.
I think they've already done it. That's my point.
I thought you were pointing-
I don't like undoing it. I don't like undoing what the city council did in their-
You think they've approved it with, with twenty-four hours operation?
Yes. That was my understanding in watching the meeting.
So in a formal sense, they have not taken that action.
Yes.
You might have that impression from what they said, but in a formal sense, they have not-
Let's go to the tape.
Well, no, and, and man, I hate to get
I know.
In the technicalities of it, but you can't make a recommendation on a text amendment until there's been a public hearing and there's been notice given and different things like that. So before tonight, you couldn't do that when we had a meeting with
Which is why they didn't approve it.
The Friday before a Tuesday.
Yeah.
We didn't have time to get things ready for them to take action the next Tuesday.
Which is why they tabled it.
Which is-
Didn't they table, they, they, they said, we can't address that now because we haven't, it hasn't done the due process.
They said that.
Yeah.
Again, that could get too technical, but there wasn't even anything to continue. There wasn't anything to table that night.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
It was just a discussion.
Yeah.
Uh, with the idea that this would happen, what's going on now. So I will say this. I think that you need to make some recommendation. That's it. And at some point in time, the city council then has to make the decision.
The city council, if they feel like they want to reduce that, they can.
That's always their prerogative, right? That's how it works.
I don't necessarily like that, but I feel like from the feeling that I got from talking to two city councilmen and watching that, this is what I, I understood them, that they wanted to do. And I don't feel good about, about changing what is written here now. You know, I don't know how you guys feel about it. I don't even know, I don't know, you know, would you just, you know, not strike those, that one sentence of the hours of operation are limited from, you know, to six AM to eleven AM? Hey, I go up to the airport every now and again and six o'clock's too late to get gas.
Well, no, their pumps would still be open. It would be the convenience store that's closed.
No, I usually stop and get a, a Diet Coke and some sunflower seeds to get there.
And that's why they-
Well, all I'm saying is, is that, you know, rather than being able to stop, well, anyway, that doesn't even here or there. You know what, I'm in, well, we, we're still in public hearing, so I can't.
Thank you for comments.
Okay.
Thanks. Any other comments from public?
You stayed up this late, you better have something to say.
My name's also Rachel, Rachel Jacobson. Um, I think it's still like this, it's a good compromise. I'm happy with the C1, uh, the change to C1. I like the idea of keeping everything smaller. Yeah, something like big coming in, a big huge store, the big box commercial stuff. I was also concerned about that. Um, I'm probably not as particular about the time, sorry, Rachel. Like, because if that's a compromise we need to make, I'm more concerned about like the size of what goes in, so I think I would be good with this moving forward, just from all the discussion, because I do understand having things open during the night for people to stop and get what they need and and I hadn't thought about safety. I think that, like, if there are eyes there during night, I think that could be a good thing. So anyways, I'd be happy.
If you've ever had a sick child in the middle of the night, it's nice to have somewhere where you can go pick up some medication or something.
Yeah, I mean, we've got one right, well, no, that's not open twenty-four, is that closed?
No.
Yeah, it's all closed at midnight, so, yeah, so I see the need for that. Anyways, that's-
Thank you, Rachel. Any other comments from public? Okay, hearing none. We will close the public hearing. So we've got all these text amendment changes.
I am going to make a motion that we approve all of the text changes to Title 15 as they have been presented to us tonight. And, and recommend that, those changes to the city council.
Okay, motion?
We're not.
Second? About a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that doesn't preclude you guys from talking to those guys again. But I'll warn you that their meeting is Tuesday.
So this your project? You too. Looks nice. We do?
Got a question. So-
Dave, it's not on my agenda. We can end the meeting now?
Concept land, love to chat about a concept. Senator two?
What's that, Brandon?
We're pulling it up.
Okay.
It's TBR.
We have the mayor of-
Oh, sorry, I thought we were done. I, I called him up.
I'd be happy to answer that.
Okay.
Okay.
Trying to get a developer's take on TBRs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brandon knows more about this than I do, maybe Mike does as well. I've seen the concept plan, I get the basic gist of it.
Item seven was adjourned.
It says six B, it's really small.
That's their business, pardon?
Other business.
I'm gonna have to have a quick bar. Okay.
We have a concept for you. The applicant's just looking for feedback in direction as far as making further investments in the concept. We'll pull up in just a second. This is property here that Dave was so kind of outlining for us. Currently it's zone RR, and so any higher density than one house per five acres wouldn't need to go through a rezone. Oh, yeah, yeah, he's looking, he has a microphone.
Sorry. Well, this one doesn't wanna stay. There we go. Um, so what the applicant is also looking for is feedback on a potential general plan, land use designation amendment as well to accommodate higher density. One thing of note is, uh, it doesn't show up on this air photo, but it is across the street from the Canyon Breeze, which was a development we just drove through, you can see it here, uh, in the R3. Looking for a similar type product to that development. It's kinda hard to see with this attached, but there is a road layout right here that eventually UDOT will sever Canyon Road connecting here at Highway 6 and swing it up here. And so access is a concern, utilities are a concern. As far as development of the property, there's some, some substantial issues to overcome as far as developing. And so the, the idea for you is just, do we use increase in the density as a tool to see that develop sooner? Or is, is it not a priority to see that develop in some manner other than what the general plan currently lays out, which is, I believe, 12,000 square foot lots?
What, what is in there now?
Currently, uh, we've got some agricultural operations and some storage going on.
Nice corral.
What's that?
A nice corral. Been a lot of good horses trained in that area.
Surrounding area, what's that zone again?
So currently, the properties that front Canyon Road as well as this property are RR, rural residential.
And then- The houses are-
The houses are an R112.
R112.
Mm-hmm. And so I think the density that we'll see on the concept, it would need to be an R3. But obviously, nothing's set in stone, you could recommend it be a little less dense to transition better with the neighborhood, or you could recommend that, you know, the general plan is, is a good vision and shouldn't be changed at this point. And so, without further ado, we can invite the applicant to come up and kinda speak to-
Wayne, I'll ask you a question.
Oh.
You probably know most of the people that live adjacent to the property in one way or another. Have you had an opportunity to talk to them and see how they feel about a higher density project there?
A few, not all, I mean, ones I talked to, it kinda mixed feelings a little bit. They feel like the other neighbors would, would be opposed to it.
There isn't a lot of them, honestly.
Yeah, the rea, the reason I even ask that is, is that I've heard a little bit of blowback from some of your neighbors about the project that just, you know, it's just finishing now. There was a lot of concern, you know, when Somerset Village went in, uh, all of those apartments, or townhomes, I should say. So I was just wondering how they, you know, what the feeling of the neighborhood is, if you've done any other than, you know, just when you run into somebody, you talk to them?
Yeah, just in general. I think one advantage maybe is it's in the backyard, they're not blocking any views, it probably could be a view.
I had to chase my grandson's, uh, drone over there one night that they lost.
Yeah, I mean, most of it, it's in the backyard, it's not something they're gonna be, I don't think it's blocking any view type thing. Uh, you know, and it is, um, higher density, yes.
I guess the only ones that really would be facing that are the ones that are on the other side of the street that comes off Canyon Road.
Yeah, most of it's in the backyard, it's-
Put it lower down.
It is.
Would it, would this project, I guess the question is for both of you guys.
Yeah.
What would it take to develop down in there, it's lower than the surrounding area, I guess, isn't it?
Uh, it, it is, and, uh, my name's Sean Hanson, so I'm, I'm here on behalf of, uh, the, the Hearst family. And just when we kinda looked at the property to begin with, um, you know, and we're kind of in that early stage where we're trying to say, okay, there's a couple of factors. One, what, what is the highest and best use that we can come across for the, for the land? And then another one is, okay, what's maybe in the community interest? And then also, what does the market, you know, what is the market gonna support? And so if you, you kinda look at the surrounding zoning that was probably set up, and you guys would know better than me, but 20 some odd years ago, a lot of those houses probably came in. And then, you know, with the, with the growth that's taking place now, in, it, we, we were looking at it like, okay, well, contemporary right now, what is, what does the market look like? And because thi, this one ties in directly with the highest and best use. And so what we were thinking, and again, this is still too early, but we're thinking, okay, do we wanna look at maybe a 55 and older community? So that people that are maybe downsizing the area, they can come in, there could be single level living, you know, with the potential of basement, you know, or maybe two floor. We wanted to keep the homes functional, but then also, hey, where's the niche in the market that the market's gonna support this, this type of, um, this type of community? One, I think that the road system is set up pretty well because you're just basically right out onto a collector and then you can get onto the highway, so it's pretty accessible. So if you, just like the project across the street, you're gonna, you, it's a pretty good place for higher density just because you're not trying to bring all those added cars through, you know, you know, back in some corner of a, a different neighborhood. And so, you know, that's kinda one of the, the issues that was in that townhome project, the roads hadn't developed. Well, the, these roads, I think, just strategically, you know, we're in a better spot there. Coming back around, so to, basically the markets, you know, what will the markets support? We're kinda looking into that, but part of it depends on what does, you know, there's these three things tying together. What does the community, you know, what are they going to say? Oh, you know what, that fits, or we're not upset about that, you know? And, and generally, you know, people don't necessarily like development or change nearby because it's a headache for people to deal with. And then, you know, which is why people come out and plan against it. But if, uh, what can we do to minimize those impacts? And then, you know, does it fit, basically, is it cohesive with the surrounding areas? And 20 years ago, it definitely wouldn't have been. Right now, in this contemporary time, you know, where housing needs are changing with maybe kind of the boomer generation downsizing. I think, I think this does fit kind of a niche. And we're not 100% saying, hey, we're committed to doing the 55 and older, but it's been what we've been looking at the strongest right now. And so with that community, to serve the needs of that, that demographic, a lot of them, they wanna have a smaller house, they want to have some type of single level living capabilities with extra space if someone comes to visit. But then they don't wanna necessarily have to take care of their yards. And so we'd have kind of a common, common yard space, they want garage parking. And, uh, and so that's, that's basically what we're looking at, filling that need for the community. And, um, the, uh, you know, and that's where the considerations that we are seeking, and right now, we're just basically saying, hey, we, we're open to feedback on what, what the commission deems as a, a good responsible use for that. But also, we're kind of on the side of, we're looking for the highest and best use, you know, for it as well, so. And then, um, did, I'll just ask, Wayne, did you have any other comments on that or anything?
Wayne, when you get to be 55, are you gonna move down there?
I'm already there.
Oh, I'm not in one of these.
He was phase one, so.
Uh, leave this up for just a second. Uh, I don't see in this, in this, you know, this is drawing, I'm sure, but, I don't see, uh, this particular, uh, representation doing anything to get to Canyon Road. It would just go back over to, uh, whatever east that is.
Yeah, 1530.
So you wouldn't come off, uh, through that driveway like it has been?
How did it approach UDOT, but I think that might be a stroke.
It would, it probably, uh, that was my next comment, if you were planning on. With this, with this like this, Wayne, uh, are you gonna take out your house? That looks like it's taking your house out.
No, my house is just on the other side.
Okay, so, so yours is right here.
No, actually, it's-
There, right now, we're leaving that.
Yeah. Yeah, so you're not, you're not planning on-
At this point.
Your wife doesn't wanna move.
What does the, Brandon, what does the staff think about this? You mentioned some utility issues, and you mentioned traffic.
So access to the townhouse, it'd have to be, maybe Michael could speak to that better.
Are you still on the board for the other?
Yeah, well, we're still on, we're still on the clock here.
All right, so there's one point of access, so a couple of things go along with that. 35 units, cause there's no planned extension to a future phase, like earlier where we could go to 50. This is 35 max. One point of access, ideally for the property, it's as far away as possible from Canyon Road. How much speed of the road, faster the cars come around the corner, wanna reduce the conflicts. I think this is pretty adequate for the distance here. If it was on this side of the road, I'd be a little more worried, but I think, I think you're pretty good at this spot. Utilities, everything's in the road here, it just needs to be stepped in. I don't think we have any issues really there. Storm drain is probably the only issue, I'd say, but we're figuring that out. You have a lot of houses with roof drains, and you have a lot of houses here, the backup to it. There's, would be no storm drain in the park strip. Normally on residential streets, you'd have a park strip that's our tanks in it. With this one, they would like to go with the reduced width, so the street would be two feet narrow of asphalt, narrower of asphalt. And park strips would be three feet narrower, which means they're too small for the storm bricks or storm tech, whatever we put in there. So they usually in multifamily, put them in banks, so big blocks of them in a park or a detention basin type area. So the question would be, where is that going to go? And if it happens to have a bigger storm than its size, for where does that water actually go? Usually it goes to the street and can get out, so it'd need to be graded so any excess water can get. So if they put a basin here, it's gotta get out.
That would be, sorry to interrupt, but that would be ideal, I said, ask the low corner of the park.
Over here? So then the question, I mean, then if it overflows or gets clogged or anything else, where does it go? Obviously, we don't want it back here. And these are more design level things, when we actually get survey and they're designed for the subdivision. But conceptually, those are some issues we need to work through.
Would that be a city street?
Yes. Slightly narrower, um, it would have to be no parking, at least on one side, which you probably wouldn't have a whole lot of parking given the number of driveways along here.
So system HOA, system, or is that?
So you, will you have someone that does the yardkeep and the snow removal?
Yep.
Stuff like that for the residents?
Yeah.
Get our snow plow, is it?
It'd be another place to push the snow, where it's basically a big cul-de-sac. Where people push the snow, so there's some of that stuff that's, we're talking concept here, I'm kinda talking where we're gonna end up. Those are just the general design things we need to, to look at.
It seems pretty tight, I mean, I'm sure you're trying to maximize.
Yeah.
Right, but with, you know, you take six of those out of there, give it some more green space and places for the water to go, may, may get less.
And, yeah, in, kind of for the, to make the case for the higher best use, you know, we used a lot of ink on this rendition, so.
Yeah, right.
You know, but, so, but, you know, so we are kind of, you know, definitely open to saying, okay, you know, what's gonna be more aesthetic along that back area? Do we break, put a break in, you know, and either have a park area of the houses, you know, just in between there or something? And so we're, we're definitely, and with the, the way that we wanted to be able to enter the, the neighborhood, it does allow up to 35, we were at 34, but, um, and some of these, these home sites are a little bit bigger than, um, what we, what is across the street at, you know, so there's a little bit bigger home sites than that dimension, dimensionally, so. But that, that being said, right now, it's wet clay. And we're looking for basically kind of input from, you know, what the, uh, what the commission can get behind and the planning staff, as well as what we can kinda put together to make a great community. And we, again, I've seen this, I, so I work generally up in Salt Lake County, kind of in the Mill Creek or Holiday area. And one of the things that's happening out there, and it's, it's probably a little bit different, but you're having a lot of people retire, so they're wanting kind of to downsize into more simple, you know, get rid of the big house and the lawn and the yard to take care of winters, summer, fall. And a lot of those people will go to more of a condominium living because they don't really have space up there to do this type of thing. This is just one of those, you know, infill pieces that's been used as an agriculture purpose for so long. And now it's kind of like, okay, it's time for this to transition, you know, into, you know, so we gotta do the rezone anyway. But we're looking at, you know, kind of creating a good community and potentially, we'd like the 55 and older community because there's a lot of these folks, they don't wanna have to move somewhere out. They, they like their wards, they like, you know, where they go to church, their doctors, their, you know, where they shop. And so just kinda pull from, you know, that area, so.
Brandon, what's the next, what could they, we went to the next density down from R3, what would they be able to fit on this?
Yeah, that's a great question, so, um, that's kind of the question that Chairman Tanner was getting at was, what are, what are our thoughts? So obviously, the proximity to Canyon Road is great, but then there's limitations on the site as far as the grade changes and whatnot. Then you also have to consider the established neighborhood and then the general plan currently calls out. And so what they have here is 6.5 units an acre, which- And so, what they have here is 6.5 units an acre, which would be above what the R16 allows, and that's the next step down. So R3, you can go up to 12 units max, and then the next step down is, as far as density goes, is the R16, which is...
Which is 5.37 units an acre. And so, similar to what you had suggested, if you lose some units and open up some green space, maybe that would be a better option as far as design. But I like the original, I can't remember who made the comment of, you know, really do the homework and go start knocking on doors and... And see exactly the reception, because you may have some neighbors who, you know, may want to look out the back and see something different. You may have some neighbors who may not want to see, you know, this number of units. And may want to just keep it as is until something less dense comes along.
Any, any acres is in density?
Six-ish.
Six-ish?
Six to the acre?
I believe so, yeah.
They're R16, yeah, so they'd be...
And that's what this is drawn up as?
This is drawn up as it would need an R3.
This is drawn to be an R3?
It's some R16.
Twelve? Twelve in the acre?
Yeah.
With this, I believe, are...
You're at 6.5.
6.5.
And so, yeah, the limitations are...
Pretty close to.
Without, yeah, without those additional...
If you drop the four house you're talking about, you know, in that area. What, if you were to lose, what does that do to your performance on this? I mean, does it not pencil in, or?
Well, and that's kind of, you know, with that, because there's certain things that can move around a little bit. But, I mean, we could potentially look at, you know, reducing units, maybe to fit into, you said it was 5.375?
5.37, yeah, the R16 zone.
We'd definitely take a look at that to, at least, you know, maybe that's an easier pill for the surrounding neighbors to swallow, or, you know.
Gives some more flexibility for design of the actual, some of Michael's concerns, satisfy how those actually work when you get a civil engineer designing this out.
Yeah.
So what's Canyon Breeze across the way there?
I believe they're an R3.
It's R3.
Six point something, probably?
Yeah, I think they're about worth, so, not that this wouldn't be obvious, but we kind of modeled our density a little bit off of theirs right across the street.
Yeah.
So that was maybe between two highway and Canyon Road versus back in residential homes, I guess, is the difference.
Yeah.
And you know, I think that, you know, it really does start with talking to your neighbors. You've been here tonight and seen that we have people all the time that want to be heard. And you'll always have somebody that doesn't want anything to change, and others that are gonna really like your proposal. Do you know, it really goes a long ways to just go knock on doors and say, what do you think? You know, we're gonna clean some stuff up, you know?
We discussed that, and actually, that's been part of the plan because we think it's a better way to, you know, at least find out what the real, you know, like, points of concern would be from them. And then maybe we can mitigate those by, you know, addressing it early. And then, also, people don't like to feel like they're getting snuck up on, you know?
Absolutely.
I just come up a lot tonight, you want to be good neighbors, you definitely want to be good neighbors.
Yeah, and I think you've got a lot of good neighbors that are around that area. I know a few, not as many as you guys, but, you know, they're good people there, and, you know, they seem to be good neighbors. They take care of their homes and stuff, so, you know, a nice community feature would be probably okay with it. But I would definitely get their input and say, okay, you know, this is, you know, just take something simple like that, say, you know, this is what we're thinking about, you know, how would, how'd you feel about it? I don't know, you'll get, there aren't any fireflies there, are there?
There you go.
I could kid Wayne a lot, but he's got more stories on me than I do on him. We've known each other since we were Cub Scouts, and this German shepherd tried to take my throat out. Shadow.
It took you a long way to try and get that.
Well, I don't think I have anything further to add, other than appreciate the feedback that we've gotten. And I can give, you know, if there's nothing else, but, and maybe just kind of surmise. So maybe look at, get with the planning staff and kind of, and I guess, this is what I'm hearing, and tell me if I'm right on this, but one, we need to do basically some neighborhood work and just talk to the neighbors.
Where you go to most of it.
And then, once we do that, talk, kind of talk a little bit about, and this is kind of a question, would you guys kind of rule out, or would you say, well, there is potential for R3 because it's across the street? Or would you say, are you saying, we kind of like this other direction of going towards the R16? What kind of, is there an opinion on that, really?
My opinion is the one, the R16. And, I don't know, if you went and looked at many of these over 55 projects?
Not specific here to Spanish Fork, but...
So there's one in Springville that we did a field trip on that we really liked.
You remember the name, chance, or just location?
Is that on Fourth South?
Fourth South?
What's it called again?
The one to the east of IUC?
Yes.
Right there.
It's this project here.
Now, them are kind of like a fourplex. They got a shared driveway and four homes in one. You go through that, you drive through that, and it is very, very impressive. Lot of green space, lot of landscape, they've got a clubhouse there that, so it's got some amenities. I don't know how many, that's probably twice as big a project, isn't it? Yeah, yeah. But it's very appealing, and I, if I was looking, and I like the concept of this personally, I'd see myself in one of these someday. But that's what I'd be looking at, is a little bit more room, a little more green space, that looked pretty tight to me.
You'd over to Salem. That's four units north of the high school.
Is it? It doesn't look like it.
That's pretty dense.
It's pretty dense, you figure that each one of those is four units, that upside.
It's pretty efficient. So that could be, the thing is making it, you know, maybe we're accomplishing our goals, but, you know, it doesn't look as, you know, it's not, you know, four times that many separate structures, you know, gathered together, so it's more aesthetically appealing, that's...
Yes.
And so, I'm just gonna...
But that's opinion, you asked for an opinion, and that's what I would go for. And I, to be honest with you, I think if you presented something like that, concept wise, pictures, whatever, to your neighbors, I think that would also invite some, you know, hey, wow, that would look nice in our backyard, versus some...
It'd be nice to know what they're thinking and be able to, you know...
Any other thoughts, commissioners, that you could add some advice?
Advice from me, I think it's a little bit too high density. I think you're gonna have a little bit of public clamor.
Yeah, I do.
I think you will.
Yes, that one right there is really nice.
Where's that at?
North of Salem House.
Yeah, that's just right, that's just there by the Salem Hills High School, just north of it.
So is that like some duplexes and threeplexes?
They're all duplex, I guess there's a threeplex. But to the west, you can see that they have a trail down in there, and they've got some nice amenities there. Not a lot of amenities, but it's, it's, it's an HOA as well. I've known a couple of people that have lived there, and inside them, and they're really nice.
How many square feet would you think those are?
Lots less.
They look a lot bigger, they look big.
They look big, but I don't know how big they are inside. One of them that I was in was, had three bedrooms, and, you know, a couple of them have the second story, but both of the ones that I went in were slab on grade and one story. As a matter of fact, it's right down the end of that street on the right. Anyway, they're very, you know, those are really nice.
This is an over 55?
This is over 55. Been there for quite a while.
Talk to your neighbor.
Or a high school.
See what they say, that's big. We hate coming in here and having public clamor. But we like people just to be nice and friendly.
Well, you got on the wrong committee.
When's that, I don't see that.
Okay, hope that helps.
Thanks for coming, guys.